Forty-four A and forty-four B, Prospect Hill Street in Quincy.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? How about anybody against? Okay, seeing none, seeing no further public comment, I will close this hearing at 6:31. We'll be back in four minutes for the next public hearing. Thank you. The Monday, November fourteenth, 6:35, public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for Council Orders 2022-133 Utility Grant Location Mass Electric, Verizon, 33 Newport Ave., and 2022-134 Grant of Locations Mass Electric, 33 Newport Ave. At this point, I'd like to ask anybody opposed tonight on this matter? Anybody opposed? Okay, how about anybody in favor? All right. Seeing not further public comment is needed, I will close this public hearing at 6:35. Thank you. We'll be back for the next public hearing at 6:40. At 6:40, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's close to 6:40, so I'll start the meeting up. I'd like to call order Monday, November fourteenth, the 6:40 meeting of the Quincy City Council Ordinance Committee. I'd like to bring it to order. Madam Clegg, your color roll.
Councilor Andronico, Councilor Kane.
Present.
Councilor Debona.
Present.
Councilor Harris.
Present.
Councilor Yang.
Present.
Councilor Mahoney.
Present.
Councilor Phelan. Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Six members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I just got to read the open meeting law for a sec. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and impermissible. Tonight, we have the Quarry Hills lease extension. I see representatives from Quarry Hills here and folks from the public. Before we start, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Walker, the Mayor's Chief of Staff, who'd like to go over a few things. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It's a pleasure for me tonight, on behalf of Mayor Koch, to present you the home rule petition that will authorize the city to execute a new hundred-year lease with Quarry Hills Associates for the property we know today as Granite Lakes Golf Club. I'm joined tonight, although he's not in the room yet, by Solicitor Jim Timmons, who'll be able to answer any technical questions. Oh, there he is. Hello, Solicitor. Technical questions relative to the lease itself and the team from Quarry Hills Associates and Granite Lakes, President Tom O'Connell, Senior Vice President Will O'Connell, General Manager Walter Hannan, Chief Financial Officer Mary Orlando, and Director of Operations Kevin Mason. My understanding through you, Mr. Chairman, is that we expect to handle this process like we've handled, in a similar way as we've handled other legislation in the recent past. We're not seeking a vote tonight. We understand the councils will have questions, and we look forward to hearing the input that members of the public will have as well. It's our hope that we come away from this evening with questions that we, any questions that we cannot answer, with having those questions in hand and the answers soon to follow in very short order. Before I get into the details, I'd like to respectfully ask your indulgence if I go over just a little bit of history. I understand that no member of this current body, with the exception of Council Phelan in his first iteration as a city councillor, was present at the time during the 1990s and after, when this project took on its face. So the 450-acre site that we know today as Granite Lakes Golf Club, for decades was a dump, a literal dump, serving both the city of Quincy and the town of Milton. During the 1980s, it was a time when the state rightfully, to protect the environment, started ordering municipal landfills to be capped and closed to a very specific condition as to avoid future pollution. At the time, obviously, our landfill at that site was no exception. The city was under a direct order to close the landfill. At the time, the discussions about what was going to happen, there was a cap that the city had placed on its portion of the landfill. Milton's was untouched, but even the cap that the city had at that time, the additional preventative measures that we had to use during that time cost the city about $200,000 a year to prevent the leachate from getting off the site. So it was not a fully closed landfill at that time. The site was, without question, a financial drag on the city. Enter the Big Dig, the largest public works projects, largest public works project in the country's history at that time, and its need to find a place for millions upon millions of cubic yards of fill. What followed was an extraordinary vision and a great effort by a number of people. Mayor Sheets, this body at that time, I see former Council Cahill in the audience, he was involved during that time, former Council Fabrizio was involved at that time, current councillor, as I mentioned, Council Phelan was involved in that time. Those councillors, members of the community, and the private partners came up with the program. The end product was a solution that provided a place for the Big Dig to take its dirt, a landfill closure plan using that dirt to cap the landfill according to state regulations, and an extraordinary public-private partnership that created a 27-hole championship golf course, one of the region's most sought-after function facilities, new playing fields for Quincy's young people, and millions of dollars in new revenue for the city of Quincy. First home rule petition in the 50-year lease dates back to 1994, and there have been several updates and amendments over that time and beyond, the most substantive of which was developed between Mayor Phelan and Quarry Hills Associates back in 2002. That body has before it the 2002 amended and revised lease for comparative purposes with the new 100-year lease that is the subject of the home rule petition. Again, what's before this body for a vote is the home rule petition that authorizes the city to enter the lease. The council is not being asked to vote directly on the lease, although the draft before you is substantive, and we believe it is the working document. You can see from those two documents, the original lease and the amended version back in 2002 was essentially a construction lease. It spoke to landfill closure provisions, construction standards, the redevelopment of other parcels that were in the immediate area. That work today is all long done, and the language that guided that document back then is no longer operable. So the new 100-year lease that is the subject of the home rule petition eliminates much of that original construction-related language and becomes more so an operational lease. It keeps in, maintains the core provisions of the original lease that relate to the ongoing function of the facility, guarantees 10% of all gross golf-related revenue to the city, guarantees 10% of all other net revenue from the facility to the city. That's functions, alcohol, food, for the most part. It strengthens the language related to the city's playing fields that will facilitate major improvements to those fields, and provides Quarry Hills language to allow for major capital investments under all normal planning and zoning requirements by the city. So why are we doing this now and why for 100 years? There's two reasons. One is principle, one is practical. The principle is simply, it worked. There's new leases of validation of all that work that made it happen. Mayor Phelan, Mayor Sheets, the councils I mentioned, Council Phelan, Council Fabrizio, Council Cahill, all those members of the council at that time, the members of the community, the state legislative delegation, all the members that served on the community advisory committees back then. The facility has matured, and it is working about as well, if not better, than anyone involved back in the 1990s could have possibly imagined. It only makes sense for the city to provide long-term stability that will continue the partnership and continue the success and expand upon that success. Just a couple of touch points. Last year, the city received close to $700,000 as part of the revenue share I mentioned a little bit ago. That's compared to just over $200,000 a decade ago. So as the course, the club, the popularity of the facility has grown, so too has the revenue to the city of Quincy. It's 500 jobs at the facility, almost half of them held by Quincy residents. More than $30,000 rounds of golf every year, about half of that broken up between membership play and public play. And obviously Quincy residents get a discount, and that will continue going forward. Ball fields that are there today, utilized by thousands of our young people over the course of the last however many years that it's been open, and just it's a stark reminder that when this process started, and that vision started between the private partnership and the city, that that place was a wasteland. It was costing the city money, and it was nothing going on up there. And now we have everything that I just mentioned above. So yes, this lease provides a level of permanency, but permanency is what we believe and is what we want for something that has been this successful. Again, it worked. Beyond that is the practical need. The practical need and the driving reason from the private side, and they can, and Mr. O'Connell and the team from Granite Lakes can certainly answer any questions relative to that, is site control is needed to make major capital investments. With time drawing down on the original lease, the lease is becoming an obstacle to maintaining the existing asset and fostering future growth. The team from Quarry Hills obviously will be able to answer questions on that point, but the fact is, site control is a critical element to any kind of major long-term capital financing, and the current lease no longer provides that. We know that Granite Lakes has a number of capital needs needed to support the growth it has enjoyed over the last several years, in particular parking is one under current conditions that the folks from Granite Lakes know they need to address that immediately in the near term. The new lease provide our partners with the stability of site control. They need to make near-term investments, but also creates the potential for longer-term growth. And again, if Granite Lakes increases its revenue, the city increases its revenue. If Granite Lakes succeeds, the city succeeds. So it behooves us to provide them the tools they need. The city is well aware, and I think everyone in this audience tonight and members of this body have been there, well aware that the access point to Quarry Hills via Ferencburg Parkway and Willard Street and Rashudi Drive needs to be addressed. That is a current condition issue that needs to be addressed regardless of anything that happens in the future. We understand that bottleneck. It's been like that for some time as the popularity of the ball fields, as the popularity of the golf course, as the popularity of the function facility has grown, so too has the issue at that crossing. We know it's an issue. We've discussed with Mass DOT how to fix that issue. They are currently in the design phase of a major improvement to that crossing that will address the immediate need. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the only thing that can hap, needs to happen if, long-term, if there are any other matters going forward up at the golf course, but that issue is, we are on the tip list. We expect to be, have D E P, I'm sorry, DOT ready for public discussion of a plan for that design in the very near future. In your packages, councillors, tonight, you also have documentation related to some questions I know you've all received relative to the status of walking trails and access points to the Blue Hills Reservation. The process that took place way back when on this issue was outside of the lease, was not part of the lease agreement, but was rather part of the state permitting process relative to the landfill closure. The documents you have in front of you this evening get into the history of this issue, and Mr. O'Connell and the team can certainly elaborate on it. They show that Quarry Hills has long been in compliance with the requirements as directed by the state DEP. You also have a map in your package that shows the access points as directed by the DEP process, and I'm sure, again, the team from Quarry Hills will be happy to answer any questions you may have about that part of the history of the project. With that, council, I'll turn it back over to the body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Folks, at this point, we're going to have a public comment, period. So I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak on Council Order 2022-131 to come to the podium and state your name and address. There's also a sheet in the back for those folks that want to put down, if they're in favor or opposed, to put their comments down on the sheet that's in the back. If you don't want to come up to the podium, but make sure you put your name and address. So we'll open it up right now, and feel free to be the first one to walk up to the podium. Are you in? Yes, sir.
Can you hear me through the mask?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Ann Meyerson. I live at 174 North Central Avenue, and I would like to state that I am strongly opposed to the concept of a home rule petition to have a 100-year lease. And very simply, I feel that a commitment of 100 years is irresponsible on the part of the city. I cannot imagine what the city and the world will look like in 100 years, and I strongly do not think that we should commit ourselves to it. I would also like to state that I feel there's not been any opportunity for public input on the use of the land, on how it should be handled until this suggestion came up. And finally, I do want to say that if, in fact, this has been so successful, the city would be in a better position to negotiate and take some competition to see who might even be more successful rather than tying us up for 100 years. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lori Earl. I live at 118 Billings Street in North Quincy. And I actually haven't said anything up here since I tried to fight for middle school foreign language to stay in the school system many years ago, which was not successful. But I just was a bit astounded at the idea of a 100-year lease as well, the fact that I had not heard or seen any information out in the public about this decision that was kind of almost sounded like it was a done deal when I first read about it. And so it just seems I'm really a proponent of saying, let's have more community input in this conversation, community members who might be part of this council that makes this decision, you know, maybe some clarity in terms of the oversight of the development expectations and plans. Is it in writing that the city will continue to get these same kinds of revenues from additional? You know, there's divisions between what you get 20% on and 10%. I know that the, I don't think rent is collected for this, so it's just this revenue. And so just the whole, it just seems very rushed, and it's a big piece of land in a prominent location. You're right, nonprofits and all kinds of groups love the event space, and it's fantastic, definitely. We need improvements with that drive, and I can see why parking would be an issue, but there just needs to be more conversation about this, more transparency, and more input from the community, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Judy Lauren Jacobs, the Executive Director of the Friends of the Blue Hills, and I don't live in Quincy, but I do represent a number of Quincy residents. And I have a list of over 70 people from Quincy and from the surrounding area that are interested in this issue. We, I acknowledge all of the benefits that Quarry Hills Associates and this agreement has given the, given the city of Quincy. We don't at all oppose the lease and know that Quarry Hills Associates is a really great neighbor. What we have been working on for 25 years as an organization is to increase access to the Blue Hills from north of Quincy. And in those 25 years, there's even more people that live in that area and that could benefit from the park. We also know even more now the benefits of natural areas on both mental and physical health. We would like to ask the city of Quincy to work with Quarry Hills Associates to increase access to the park through a trail either through or around the park or perhaps seasonal access. We understand that there, we have maps that the original findings were based on that could access the park, but there, there's certainly options of increasing the park through different trails and certain access. So we encourage you to think about what sorts of public benefit in addition to all of the other benefits that are already in the contract that you could also include that would increase access to the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Zamsow, 356 Washington Street, Quincy. Dave, there's a fatal problem with how you opened up this meeting to public comment tonight for both past practice by the council as well as MGL. A public hearing including public comment should have been duly noted, noticed, and advertised. This was not done. Rather, basically, at the last minute, apparently you decided to open up this hearing to public comment so that I can only assume would be able to say that such was done in the context of the proposed intertwined home rule petition. This is no way to do things. As such, I would strongly advise you to close the meeting immediately and then proceed to duly notice and advertise a future do-over meeting as a public meeting. If you do not, I will file an open meeting law complaint. In turn, not only should you thus plan on having to do a full do-over of this meeting, but also redo anything further done before a ruling against you might be promulgated. In case you do not close this meeting forthwith, please consider the following additional points. First off, as regards to concerns expressed about 100-year lease, you all might want to notice that 100-year lease conveys the property leased to the lessee, per Massachusetts law, to the lessee upon the end of a duly consummated lease. Next, while the current lease agreement is what it is and is thus set, there are additional, as well as considerable, financial considerations that would arise care of the proposed 100-year lease proposal. For example, the assessed value of the property is currently $25 million. This in turn would work out to a $600,000 annual tax bill this year, where both the land and the property improvements owned by the O'Connells outright per standard practice. Mr. Walker said this evening that current payment is about $700,000, and I had to make some revisions to my comments on the fly. But this does not include, this does not include hotel motel meals tax and other things. It's unclear how to be able to parse out how that $700,000 reflects as to what the taxes would be. Also, absent more data, it would appear that the current payment may not provide anything left over towards allocating, towards the cost, towards leasing of the city property to the O'Connell group. Such poses obvious problems. Granted, the original lease was set with some consideration of the fact that the O'Connells took on addressing runoff problems at the old dump sites on the property as well as various other things. At the same time, if a new lease is to be considered, revisiting the in lieu of discount or tax payment on property taxes should be revisited in terms of what the O'Connells did to effect remediation and any other possible factors. Granted, the old system, city was laying out $200,000, but how much did it cost the O'Connells to solve the problem? Have they already recouped that? If that $200,000 was factored into the consideration of things, it's time to revisit. Also, these and all manner of other considerations should be duly calculated by outside experts, as well as preferably those of the council's choosing, or at least duly vetting. Needless to say, such an effort would be complicated. As such, I would propose that the council insists that if a new deal is to be struck, it should be based on a straight sale of the land by the city and that going forward, the property tax levy on the whole of the property be determined per usual practice as opposed to the current, the current in lieu of what is reported as the gross, but Mr. Walker said, the net. Doing this would make it so much cleaner, as well as there are surely no concerns for the O'Connells about the viability of developing golf food and events, the golf food and events facility two decades ago because it's up and running, and I'm sure they have fully recouped their speculative outlays and then some. They also got an awful lot of money for tipping the dirt from the Big Dig. As such, it should be, as it should be a sale, a sale should be put out for bidding per the standard procedures for disposing of city property. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Weeewu. I'm a resident at 20 Turning Mill Lane in West Quincy. I've been a resident of Quincy for 55 years, and this is the first time I've ever attended a meeting. And the reason I know about it is because at the Pride Festival there, not this year but the year before, I, there were so many not-for-profit organizations, and I got on email lists and of these organizations that do have concerns about Quincy and different parts, like trees and whatever. So had I not been there, I'd plead ignorance again about some of the issues going on in the city. My concerns are more about, are practical in that, you know, the Quincy, as everyone knows who's been here a while, has undergone major changes, and I'm fine with changes, but it sounds like this lease could just totally be the mega or the magnum of it is the amount of luxury apartments and condominiums that have gone up in neighborhoods. And I grew up in the North Quincy-Wallaston area. I live on, in West Quincy, near the Home Depot. And I, you know, as much as I appreciate how the beauty of Quincy Center looks and some of the pride of being in Quincy, never expecting to be here this long, I feel like that to allow a 100-year lease with a set sort of percentage and then not knowing what could be additionally developed with that, and I don't know if there's clarity on that and who's the person, is it Mr. Timmons, that would answer some of these questions as far as legal questions? And that's, that's one huge concern I have. I'm not, I don't have kids, so I don't know how the traffic problem is other than I can barely see the road that goes up to the ball fields because I do go to the tavern. I never had a bad meal, you know? I'm not a golfer. I tried it once or twice, but I recommend it highly every time I have family, friends to come to the city. Beautiful view. I remember the Quincy dump vaguely in the Big Dig, and so, I mean, there's no doubt about it. The other concern I do have, and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, is that I, to be honest with you, I saw this ledger and I saw this, I don't even know where those trails supposedly are that were done or not done, which, again, I'd like clarity because I've read that it's, they're not clear, they're not there, and then I've read that they are there, they just had to make it differently. Well, I saw the map on the ledger, I blew it up, I'm like, all right, this is like, so it seems to me very outdated. The entrances are not true to what they are now, and I don't even know what's beyond when I take that bare left there. I assumed it was sort of none of my business to know that there might be access to trails and views when you continue on Rashudi Drive. I never go beyond that, to be honest with you, because I just didn't think there was anything there for me to do. So I just have practical concerns and lots of questions, and I don't, I don't know how the city would want to make decisions without community impact and community input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean, and I live in H. Jackson Street in Quincy. The thing that I think originally struck me, that got me aware of this issue in the first place, was looking at just Google Maps and kind of realizing the absurdity of a situation where neighbors in, neighborhoods in Milton and Quincy adjacent to Cunningham Park live less than a half mile from the Blue Hills Reservation, which is one of the largest and well, most well-preserved green spaces inside of Route 95 corridor, and they simply cannot walk there despite the fact that they are separated from the park, the DCR land, by public green space, which exists on public land, city of Quincy land. And it doesn't entirely make sense to me how it can be the case that there can be such little green space in the city of Quincy, such hard-to-access green space in the city of Quincy, and that neighbors can't even pass through it in order to get to their kind of legally, legally allotted public land. So looking into it more, the only reason I became aware of this lease renegotiation was because I, I started proactively asking questions, which I'd like to reiterate the comments about the possible inadequacy of notification about this process. It does seem like by the time it was already completed and that the lease was already negotiated and ready to be simply signed off on, which, to me, raises the question, and I don't claim to understand this entirely, there's a lot of details, it's a complicated project, but it sounds to me as though the terms of the lease that were signed in 1994 were obviously acceptable to QHA, and obviously QHA has been able to run a profitable business. The Patriot Ledger reported that they have paid $4.6 million in revenue to the city in the cost-sharing agreement in the last 10 years. So that is an average of $460,000 a year. So if the terms of the lease were acceptable in 1994, when the lease included a long list of obligations that QHA had to adhere to, as far as the construction of their, the land and the capping of the landfill, then how can it be that the City of Quincy isn't in a position to negotiate a new lease with new provisions? I'm not an expert. I don't claim to have fully understood the leases, but I have read both of the leases. And from what I have seen, there is much more removed from the original lease than has been added into the lease as far as requirements or stipulations for the leases. So it, again, raises the question, if the lease was a good deal for QHA 30 years ago, and the needs and the nature of the City of Quincy have changed dramatically in that time, how can the city commit to effectively the same agreement, but more favorable to QHA and for a much longer time period, a time period where quite literally no one in this room will still be here at the point at which the lease is up for renegotiation? And let me think. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members of the council, Tim Cahill, 51 Grenwald Road. As Mr. Walker stated, I was on the City Council when this lease was first and voted for the original lease when it came before us. I believe I was on the council when it was amended as well. And I will tell you, in my role as the City Council, there wasn't a better vote I ever took. Very rarely can you take a vote that you can look back on 30 years, almost 30 years later and say, "That was a great vote. Things worked out exactly the way we hoped they would work out," if not better. And I say that as a former City Council, I also say that as a chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, because what Granite Links gives to the city is invaluable, because they're a homegrown company that really looks out for the interests of the taxpayers and the businesses and the people of the City of Quincy, whether it's weddings, whether it's events, whether it's golf tournaments, whether it's the Boy Scout breakfast that we all intended a couple of weeks last week. And not to pat any of us on the back, myself, Counsel Phelan, and the others were there, but it was a very, very looking-forward type of lease, where, again, as Mr. Walker said, and I think has been proven, if Granite Links does well, the city does well. And that's the beauty of the percentage, as opposed to a standard rate. And it still allows the business to function and to upgrade. And I know that that's important. It's extremely important. You think about their competitors, one of their competitors, which is the Marriott, I think has gone through three owners in the past few years, to the point where we don't know where they are, the prices have gone up, and it's almost impossible to do some business there in the realm that you did it before. The O'Connell's have lived up to every standard of the agreement and in many ways exceeded that, those standards. And I fully believe the next generation, the ones that are before us and the ones that will come after, will continue that stewardship. It's very, very rare, and sometimes very frustrating, to pass a law and see it changed or to pass a piece of legislation and to see it not work or to see it change in ways that you never intended it to work. And I saw that at the State House as well. Very, very difficult to do that and very frustrating. And this is one of the things where you can actually, you've seen it, it's worked, I think it's worked extraordinarily well for all of the citizens of Quincy. And it will continue to work if it's managed the way it has been. And that's another thing that I think you can look at. Usually, when we took the vote almost 30 years ago, we didn't quite know what was going to happen. If you take this vote today, I think you have a pretty good idea of what's going to happen, because you've seen it over the last 30 years, only it will get better. 100 years is a long time, and none of us will be here. But again, it's very rare for an elected official to be able to make a vote that will have an impact 100 years from now, a positive impact. And if this didn't have a positive impact, I wouldn't be up here at all. And I, again, I think it goes to the genius of Mayor Sheets and the administration of the Sheets administration, the O'Connell family, to come together with this public-private partnership, because literally both sides win. The taxpayers win, the businesses win, and the citizens benefit. Probably Granite Links is one of the three, two or three biggest attractions in the City of Quincy, and it attracts people not just from the city, but from all around, all around the Commonwealth and basically all around the country. And it's rare to have that and to lose that, especially the way the O'Connell family has run this business, I think would be a travesty. And I think it would be a bigger risk to go out, to not fool around, but to change what has been working and what we believe in the business community and as a resident for 60 years in the City of Quincy, and hopefully a resident for a few more, that this is a project that has worked extraordinarily well, will continue to work extraordinarily well, and I give it my wholehearted backing. And I believe that this council should support it because it works for the City of Quincy. It doesn't just work for the O'Connell family, it works for the entire City of Quincy. And anyone that's had anything to do up there, virtually anyone that I've talked to have had a great experience, a tremendous experience, and it's something that didn't exist. When I was growing up, that was a quarry that turned into a dump, as did many other parts of West Quincy and South Quincy, and it has certainly changed dramatically for the better. And I would really encourage you to think about that. You have an opportunity before you to make an impact on this city. We're not talking apartments, we're not talking condominiums, we're talking about basically open space, a golf course, 27-hole golf course, that people can go up and breathe and see the, one of the best sights in all of Massachusetts. And I think that's very important to keep that in mind as the city is being built out, as development comes in. This is something that will lock in what is there right now. And what is there is really beautiful, and I think it's a treasure and it's a jewel to the city, and we should do everything we can to maintain it. So I am fully in support of continuing the lease, adding the years that is being requested. This obviously will go to the State House, this obviously will be voted on by the legislature one way or the other. And as we've shown, as has been shown, it can be addressed as you go forward, because this has been amended. So it's not locking anything in beyond the fact that as things change, that this council or the O'Connell's, the parties that be the City of Quincy, can come to try to work out something if something doesn't work. But I think 30 years is a pretty good track record, and if it wasn't as good as it is, I wouldn't be standing here today, and you would have another, a different decision to make, which is who comes next. But that, to me, is more the unknown that I would strongly recommend against when you have the known that's right here. So I respectfully request that you send this to the legislature with a positive approval, and then you work with the legislature to get this passed so that this continues to be such an important part of the City of Quincy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is George Montilio. I'm a resident of Quincy, and I've grown up with actually both families, knowing them both, and knowing their backgrounds and how they operate with their father before Walter, known Walter and his father. He was just a great guy, and Walter behind him is a son, and knowing how they run their businesses, and I get to work with them a little bit, and I get to see where the operation runs it up at Granite Links. Also, the O'Connell's, known them since I was younger and grew up in my neighborhood, being from Quincy, I watched the way they've developed that, as I say, the dump, and they put all that money and time and foresight into it to get it where it is today. It's just amazing that they've got to where they are. And that alone was just a major feat, as well as Marina Bay was for the O'Connell's, and how they built that veterans' tower and done all those special things for the city and given it. I just think it's a time that we should think about, the people have invested into the city, that they've given the chance to go forward and keep their lease in effect or a new lease. And I couldn't ask for who would be better than the O'Connell's in the hands to do something like that. So that's what I'm here to say tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Matt Coles. I live, we live at 77 Reservoir Road, right across from the Furnace Brook Golf Club, and I would thank you for your efforts and communication around that project. While I live near the Furnace Brook Club, I'm a member, proud member of Granite Links. My dad, Tom Collins, is one of the original members. My son is a member. He's fortunate enough to have played baseball up there, a lot nicer than the baseball fields that I grew up on, and now he's a member of Granite Links. So I think from the members' standpoint, one of the things that the management does a really good job with is the balance between taking care of the members and serving the public with regard to the restaurants, the golf, the driving range, and that thing, and we all appreciate that. From my perspective, I've been very fortunate to bring clients and colleagues from all over the country to Granite Links, and they're blown away. I really think it's one of the things that represents the city in an extremely positive light, and I absolutely support the lease. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Joan Falvey. I live on Lion Street in Quincy. And I found out about this meeting first from Judy Lair Jacobs of the Friends of the Blue Hills and then from the Quincy Tree Lions. But for the emails that I received from them, I wouldn't know about--
Could you speak up a little, pull that mic a little closer?
But for those communications, I wouldn't know about this meeting tonight. I don't dispute all the good that Quarry Hills brings to the area. I guess I would ask, you know, it was a 50-year ground lease initially. I understand why they need a 100-year ground lease, because they're going to finance something. And it seems like the cart's before the horse. Mr. Walker talked about, you know, the DOT looking at the intersection there and already kind of revamping the whole traffic patterns and thinking about what should be done there. That, to me, says expansion. I don't dispute expansion, I think it's a great thing, but we don't know what you're going to do with a 100-year ground lease, which you need to finance. So I think that is what the parties here are asking about, in addition to having those paths evaluated and opening up the green space. So just a little bit more forethought and notice to the constituents that were here today to find out what the big picture is, why you need a 100-year ground lease, because you need it to finance, or it's a hotel, or more parking, and you had a 50-year ground lease before. Why was it 50 and not 100? It seems to me the City of Quincy maybe thought about wanting to reevaluate the money that would be coming into them, and that's why they did 50 and not 100. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Mulligan. I live on Winthrop Ave and on Wallaston Hill. Thanks for having me here today. I sent to you guys a kind of a long-ish letter just before this meeting. Not going to read all of it to you, but there's a couple of things which already have been discussed. But I wanted to actually ask a bigger question here that I think we're all missing. And the question that comes to my mind after reading the order is, what is our vision for the Quarry Hills community and in the future? You know, we're talking about, you know, putting more development up there and expanding it. There's a neighborhood up there. How is the neighborhood going to be included in this planning process? Has anybody thought about that? You know? You know, we talked about the trails and the fact that, you know, friends of Blue Hills says that they're there. I read in the paper the other day that QHA says they're, one says they're there, one says they're not there. Well, why don't we go out there as a community, walk the site, and see if they're there? And if they're not, let's fix it. Fix it. The playfields. I have firsthand experience of the playfields. I spent many, many years, six, seven years up there, playing, watching my son play baseball. And I do believe that there is something in the lease that says that QHA was supposed to maintain those fields. Well, we all know that they were not maintained. Besides mowing the lawns, there was very little visible field maintenance happening. And in fact, because I was one of the parents, I would come there early, fill all the holes in the field, in the patters box, then they could play. So storm drainage issues up at the fields after rainstorms. Those fields were very muddy. I understand why. It was a landfill. They capped it, they put dirt on top. It doesn't drain. So after rainstorms, a lot of our games got canceled for a day after because they couldn't play on those fields. Obviously, the fields were not properly designed to drain stormwater. Let's fix it. Now's the time. Car access to the ball fields. And again, to get to that field, there is a very skinny drive that goes up the hill. It's a very steep hill incline, and it's slightly wider than one car wide, yet it is used as a two-way in and out of that parking lot. And at the top, there's kind of a blind turn into the parking lot, which is pretty dangerous. The drive was never properly designed for two-way traffic, and it poses a safety concern and a bottleneck up at the access to those fields. Let's fix it. Pedestrian access. There is no pedestrian access between the Ruchichi Drive and the baseball fields. You come on the sidewalk, you have to walk up that same treacherous, really steep drive to get up to the top to get to the baseball fields. Well, let's fix it. Right? Traffic. Mr. Walker mentioned this before. Often on Saturdays right before games, we would have to, you know, build in another half hour into our schedule to get over that off-ramp to get into Quarry Hills. Obviously, it's not only a nuisance, it's a significant safety hazard. I'm glad to hear that somebody is starting to think about it. Let's fix it. My summary here is that Quarry Hills needs a master plan. There's all these issues. It could be awesome. It has the best view around. I'm up there a lot. I love it. However, it could be way, way better. And if you're considering putting more development up there besides the golf course, whatever, let's put together a master plan together as a community. Let's fix the trails, let's fix the ball fields, and so in the long term, if the city desires to improve the quality of life in that neighborhood by enhancing the valuable recreation, historic quarries, trails, open spaces, while entertaining potential expanding commercial development adjacent to the golf course, that it should be done in a holistic, integrated way to include addressing traffic and pedestrian safety and stewardship of the environment. Such planning efforts could be undertaken by an urban planner, and it would be a great use of the COVID funds that we have. Let's take a step back. There's 20 years left to this current lease. What is the rush? To summarize, smart development and a new visionary master plan is what's needed at Quarry Hills. Quarry Hills before the city should consider signing any extended lease with any developer. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jocelyn Sedney. I live at 85 Monroe Road in Quincy. I'm just here to sort of champion the Blue Hills. Blue Hills is a tremendous asset to Quincy. I'm an avid user of the Blue Hills. I'm interested in, as many of my fellow citizens, having access to the Blue Hills, whether they live in Quincy, whether they live in Milton. I'm concerned because I think that we've been talking a lot about dollars and cents. What happened in the past apparently has worked out really well. It's worked out well for the city in terms of dollars and cents, has worked out for the O'Connell family, I suppose, in terms of dollars and cents. People can be proud of the votes they made in the past. Mayors have done a good job. That's what they're all supposed to be doing for all of us. And what I'm suggesting at this point is that going forward, this city council has an obligation to read every word of this lease that is going to go on and live beyond all of us, and to be sure that that lease maximizes the benefits for all the citizens of Quincy. And I'm not just talking about money. Sure, money's going to come back into the coffers, and presumably it's going to come back at the rate it's supposed to come back. And presumably, there are provisions in the lease for periodic audits so that we're sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting for the citizens of Quincy. But there are other things that need to be considered here. You've heard a number of people talk about access to the Blue Hills, and I suppose we're going to hear something from the O'Connell's about trails. I think that we heard. I don't know what that's going to be, but I would be very surprised if we didn't hear that they are also avid users of the Blue Hills and that they are anticipating in providing trail access, well-marked, well-maintained, into the Blue Hills, because we're all interested in the people of Quincy being able to have increased access to the ability to hike with our families, to take walks with our dogs, to do all those kinds of things in the outdoors. It may not bring in money. It might not bring in a penny to the city of Quincy, but it means a lot to the residents of Quincy to have access to those recreational activities. Sure, we're not swinging a golf course or a golf club, but we're hiking. We want access. And we're not talking about opening up the whole property for access to the Blue Hills. A trail, a couple of trails, well-marked. At last I checked, I think the golf course is advertised as being semi-private. Well, that means it's semi-public. So let's serve the public, not just in terms of dollars and cents that are going to come back into the coffers of Quincy. And this is something that's going to go on forever, beyond the lives of everybody here. Let's give access, not unfettered access, but access and have it written into the lease. There are provisions that that access has to be provided, and if it's not, that there's a penalty clause and there's a way to enforce that. And I second all of the comments that have been made about the difficulty in getting information about this particular issue. I think that it's something that deserves broader consideration. And really, look at that lease. I haven't read the lease. It's up to all of you to read every single word of that lease, because it is going to have so much of an impact, not just in our lifetimes, but the lifetimes of other people. And to please try to not just congratulate people for what they've done well in the past, but look forward and say, okay, we have an obligation now to every citizen to get the most we can get for the citizens of Quincy in this lease, the most, not just dollars and cents, but the most we can get for every citizen of Quincy going forward. Thank you.
Folks, at this point, I'm going to suspend the public comment for a second so we can open up the regular meeting, and I'll be right back.
I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of Monday, November 14, 2022. It is now 7:33. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andretti.
Present.
Counselor Keane.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Yang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Counselor DeBorna.
Present.
Seven members.
Seven members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can. I'd like to get a moment of silence. Please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged or permissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to recess, and we're going to go back into our ordinance committee. Thank you.
I'll open public comment up again, and Mr. Rutherford, you have the mic.
Thank you. John Rutherford, 62 Grumwall Road. Everyone who's spoken tonight has made great points. I agree with just about everyone, so it's hard to make everyone happy. I don't think involving planning will help at all. I've been to many, many planning meetings, not to do anything disrespecting Mr. Fatsies, but this is a private thing. One of the greatest things in Quincy right now is the golf course. That is, you say, like, what's one of the coolest things in Quincy? It's the Grand Slank Golf Course. If someone comes into town and you want to take them to eat, to someplace cool to eat, you do take them to Granite Links. That's a very cool place. So when I was younger, I went to high school in the 80s, that was quarries. I went swimming in those quarries. I'm not sure if any of the counselors in front of me went in those quarries, but after those quarries, it was nothing. It was a barren land. So it was, people would get rid of old cars and throw them away in the quarries, or people would go up swimming and, you know, it was useless land, basically, not like Quincy Center. Quincy Center used to be vibrant. Up there was useless. So they took something that was nothing and they made it into something. So we've spent over $1 billion in loans that we've borrowed to try to make the city better. What they're trying to do is, they need this lease. I'm a little bit confused on if you're going to add 99 to the 24. So technically, is there going to be 124 years? I'm not sure if you're going to end the 24 and start a new 99. But none of us are going to be here in 99 years. A lot of us aren't going to be here in 24 years. One thing I think you got to write into the provision, because I go over the numbers all the time, if we, let's say, we're basically the landlords and they're the tenant, and we're going to lease them that for 99 years. Well, what happens if the city of Quincy has to file for bankruptcy in 20 years? There needs to be a bankruptcy provision that's put into that, because that could happen, because we need revenue. So the revenue that we're going to be losing from not getting every nickel and dime out of what they're doing up there, I don't really understand. I don't really understand why we're talking about all the walking trails that are up there, because they're, you know, one thing I did read, I don't, I never remember anything about walking trails. I've never walked up there. A couple of things I don't understand. I don't understand why the city council or why the city approved to put the marijuana place up there. That was not a good idea. I don't really think the ball fields were a good idea. As you could see, the ball fields, that would maybe be a good place for some senior housing or something. They took away ball fields that we used to have before. I mean, what if someone has to drive their bike or walk to go play baseball? You pretty much need parents that have a car, and that's not inclusive of everybody. So we want to be a city of being inclusive. I did notice on one of those flyers that we have that we're advertising these walking trails we have all throughout the city and stuff. But you can't advertise walking trails that go across a fairway or that are, someone's going to get hit by a golf ball. That's dangerous for people to go walking on. So one thing I'm going to say, I agree with Mr. Zamsal. We're not trying to hide anything here. The O'Connell's have been in the city of Quincy forever. Mr. Hanon, your dad was the mayor. I mean, so these people have been, these are, this is Quincy, these people. They develop without the revenue. Imagine if we didn't have the tax revenue down at Marina Bay. What would the tax rate be right now? Like $22 per thousand? So we need the new growth. We need a reason for people to want to come to the city of Quincy. So why are we doing this now? I don't know. A lot of stuff in Quincy doesn't make sense to me. We're not allowed to go behind that, bro. You guys are there making all the decisions for us. We can elect officials twice a year. I wish we could have a mayor that was every two years instead of every four years. That's a mistake that I think we made a long time ago, but what we do have to do-
Stay with the lease.
Okay. So, well, if you want to stay with the lease, one problem I do have with the lease, I would appreciate in the future, whether it be next month, next year, or even five years from now, because I do plan on being around for all three of those terms, okay? I would like the presentation, you know, like, present to the public what the lease is and what's going on, then let us make a public comment. How can I comment about a lease that I've never read? How can I comment about an LDA agreement that I don't see? I just got to make stuff up when I'm going. I don't prepare notes. I just know that the lack of information, it's hard to find. I don't, you know, it's wrong about giving us little bits of information in the Patriot Ledger, okay? You're not supposed to, people aren't supposed to be coming up here and say, hey, I read this in the Patriot Ledger, because everything is printed in the Patriot Ledger. That does not mean that it's actually true. It just means that it was printed in the Patriot Ledger. I believe something more if it was printed in the Quincy Sun than I do if it was printed in the Patriot Ledger, if it was about the lease, if we're talking about the lease. So in a total nutshell, I'm actually for this. All right? And, you know, and it's, you know, for everyone that's complaining about everything, there's been so many. I remember they gave Mayor Phelan a hard time about the Honeywell deal. Oh, he screwed up the Honeywell deal. He screwed up the Honeywell deal. There's been so many things that, you know, I wish the public would have came to speak about, you know, that we need help. We need people to get involved. So it is good that people are coming up here and they're speaking, but it's kind of like they're speaking against people that are actually helping the city. So that's why I'm a little bit confused. So I want everyone to be happy. I want Quincy to be a great place, and I want Quarry Hills to make sure you start serving Heineken, because the last time I was up there, there wasn't any Heineken, okay? And other than that, I'm for this with the Heineken-
Thanks, John.
-approval. Thank you.
Steve, a hot act to follow.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Purdeyos. I live at 86 Ruggles Street down in beautiful Quincy Point. So I have been spending a lot of time up at Quarry Hills for the last eight years or so at the, pardon me, at the baseball fields, so I know a lot about that, pardon me, firsthand. The problem with the ball fields didn't start in the last six months. It didn't start seven years ago. The problem with the ball fields have been up there for a long, long time. Somebody had mentioned maintenance of the fields being pretty much limited to the lawn mowing. I can agree with that 100% and back that sentiment up. You can't maintain a ball field once every 15 years. If we didn't have this issue come up, would we be talking about improving the ball fields there at all? Probably not. The drainage problem would continue. It would continue to exacerbate, and there's a whole host of problems with the ball fields. It's a great facility. We use it a lot. I get having all the fields in one location, there's a benefit to that, but there's a lot of systemic problems with it. This should be, this should be a meeting just on those ball fields so that we can get a lot of public input on how to improve that. So I'm glad to hear that there's going to be some improvement to the ball fields, but if the next improvement to the ball fields after whatever happens is 99 years out, that's not going to work, because things are going to break down between day one and year 99. So there needs to be something more than just mowing the lawn, okay? So I'm glad that the ball fields is in the mix. That's great news. The topic of the traffic getting into Shutey Drive being horrendous, I've kind of lived through that. It's terrible, and I'm glad to hear that that's being addressed as well. I would ask the council to make both of those issues a condition on any type of lease agreement going forward and something that's locked in. And so what I really wanted to come here tonight to advocate for are really the walking trails. We have a situation where we have one person saying it's fine, one person saying it's not fine, and there's an argument about it. My family uses the Blue Hills a lot. We love the Blue Hills. It's fantastic. Many of you know I use, I try to get to all the open spaces around Quincy. I think we've got a lot of great, great open space in Quincy, and the Blue Hills is very, very important in that mix. So I think it was Ann, I think, that mentioned, let's go up. Let's go find out. Let's have a site visit. Let's have a city council meeting up at Quarry Hills, and let's walk the trails and find out where they are. We have, you know, we can both, we can take a piece of paper and dump some ink on it and fold it in half and open it up, and you'll say it says one thing, and I'll say it looks like something else. We have somebody saying, yeah, there's walking trails, and somebody saying, well, there isn't. And this is not a new argument. This has been going on for 15 years, this argument about the trails aren't done, where are the trails? What's going on? So please don't agree to anything until you have ferreted that question out, and we can put it to rest, because it's been a long, tedious argument about the walking trails. They're supposed to be there. They're supposed to be obvious and well-accessed, and it would be a benefit to everybody, from all elements of the city, not just up in the North Quincy area, but from all walks of life around Quincy. So please make that a high priority before you make a vote on this. So thanks very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close that portion of the public comment. What I'd like to do now is open it up to committee members for questions. Mr. Timmons is here. Members of Quarry Hills, Mr. Walker, of course, will open for any questions. Counselor Mahoney?
If you'll indulge me, Chairman, I just wanted to mention that Barbara Dolan, who is also the chairperson of Quarry Hills, am I the wrong one? Sorry. I wanted to be Brian Pamucci tonight, so. If you'll indulge me, Barbara Dolan, who is also the chairperson of the Quarry Hills Advisory Board, she was not able to make the meetings this evening. It was really last minute, and they have some, they have some issues that they weren't able to make it tonight. But Brian Pamucci did have a meeting back in September, 9/8 of '22, where they were told that there would be many more meetings in regards to what was going to be happening or potentially happening up at Granite Links Quarry Hills. As in a butter, she believes that these meetings should be taking place before any decision for a magnitude regarding a 99-year lease because of the impact of the neighbors' traffic and city decisions that are being made for quality of life. And I just wanted to mention that because she was not able to make it, and she is part of the Quarry Hills Advisory Board. I'm not sure if we're incorporating them. I would love to say as a city councillor that, you know, this is the, and I too enjoy myself when I come to Quarry Hills or Granite Links, so I'm very impressed with the scenery, the sights, everything that we do. It's a little loud sometimes in my neighborhood, because I can hear it. I'm actually pretty far away from it, but I can enjoy the music for a little while, too, but that's okay. I mean, I'm not here to say that we don't have a beautiful 27 golf course, the whole golf course. It is beautiful, but this is a different course of action that we're talking about. And when this meeting happened back in September, I was not able to attend, but I was told from the people who did attend that they felt like this was the start of a conversation. And now people are feeling like, you know, this 99-year lease is being put before us, and there seems to be a rush for the lease, but the conversation isn't happening. So, and many people who came up here tonight were expressing that same thing. And, you know- And, you know, as a city councillor, what I would have hoped to have had before even talking about any of this is maybe an audit of the monies that did come in. So we don't know the monies that came in. We're in the, we, we read it once again in the newspaper. Um, I must say that I do agree with John Rodenfeld. Reading the newspapers is where I get most of my information. 4.5 million dollars has come in. When I spoke with, um, the auditor today, I was, um, told how the money was coming in. 10% goes to, um, 10% goes to, I believe, the fields. I'm not sure. Does that mean the city of Quincy is maintaining the fields? I'm not sure. We don't do an audit of that. But then also, um, goes into Corey Hills. Another, another 50% goes into the DPW for, um, design and repairs or maintenance or, or purchases of equipment. I'm not sure if that's going for the purchase of, of equipment that's happening up at Corey Hills or is that happening throughout the whole city? So we should be auditing that. We should be taking a look at that and making sure that we understand the process of how we're being able to collect that. Who's looking at that from the Granite Links or Corey Hills Association to be able to make sure that we're collecting the right amount? I'm not suggesting by any means that you're cooking your books or anything, but I'm just saying that as a councillor, I want to be able to see that transparency, that process to which we're being able to see those things happen, especially when we're discussing a 99-year lease. So that it would be something that I think that this, this committee needs to be able to review and understand. I think back in 2009, there was amendment to the lease where 40% of the revenues that was coming in, which was originally going someplace else, is now going into the revenue account. In 2009, we were hit with the recession. So this is the area when you say, what happens when Quincy doesn't have enough money to be able to pay the things that they need? How do we readdress that money? And was that 40% that we were having before going into maybe taking care of the fields or something else? I'm not sure. I wasn't here. I wasn't on the council at that time. I wasn't on the council or even when, when, when Granite Links was created. Um, but it's, but, or maybe even paying attention to city politics at that point. But, but what I'm trying to say is that this is an opportunity. You know, there's a 99-year lease in front of us today. It seems to be in front of us with public meetings happening. We don't have a Ward Four councillor. That's another thing that we have here that we're missing. You know, there's going to be a special election for a Ward Four councillor. So the Ward Four community does not have a voice and that is a huge concern. I, I live in Ward Four, but it's, it's a big concern. You know, there's a void. We're missing somebody here tonight. They had a meeting on September 8th. They promised more meetings, but we're not having those. Maybe there would have been more, you know, I, I congratulate, um, Judge Pamucci, but you know, that's something that we're missing here tonight. Um, and again, like, are there trails or not? There are no trails. I mean, I got, everybody in the city council got all of those emails. And, you know, reading in the paper, it's like, no, we don't have to have the trails. The state said we didn't have to have them, but then there are trails. I know we've walked up, up there and there are kind of trails you can get to. I'm not sure if they're legit trails, but you can kind of weave your way through the woods, but they're not maintained trails. So I think that would be really beneficial if we all did go on a field trip to kind of walk through the woods to see the trails. Dave, Council McCarthy is loving that idea. But I think that, that would be very, very, very beneficial. So, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the, um, public forum tonight, but I can't tell you how many people who reached out to me who said that they didn't know that there was a public forum tonight. And it was, I think it was because of Veterans Day. There was, it was, it was, people just didn't know about it. So I think more people would have been here had they known. And, you know, and the presentation, I think the missed opportunity was that, you know, we could have gone back and taken a look at maybe what we have done over the course of the 50 years, the successes that we had to really present it and explain it to the general public as to what has happened, what was, what to be expect was going to happen in that 50-year lease. We have 22 years left. Is this, I do have the same question. Is this, you know, is this 22 plus a 99-year lease or is it 99 years? If we sign it tomorrow, it'll be 99 years going forward. And, you know, why are we doing 99 years? What, what's the, I mean, I know the benefit of 99 years, but we did a 50-year lease first. Why would we not do another 50-year lease? Is there a reason for that, that Granite Links, to be able to accomplish some of the things that you want to do? Is that, is that the reasons? We need to understand that and to be able to under, to understand whether or not we're doing the right things for our constituents here in Quincy. I know that this is not really one question, Dave, but there's just so much that needs to be unpacked with what we're talking about here tonight. I see this as multiple meetings and potentially community meetings and many more public opportunities. But to go back to Barbara Dolan, who's part of the Quincy Hills Advisory Board, I'm not even sure. She says that it's still, it's still around and there's been no communication. So I'm not sure who's on that advisory board, but it might be important for the city council to understand who's on that advisory board.
Honestly, I don't know if that board's, uh, I was on that board 20 years ago.
Well, Barbara seems to think that the board has not dissolved.
So on it, I guess.
Yeah. So, so, so I think that might be an important thing that before we start talking about another potential long-term lease, we should probably maybe consider how we put the parameters together to discuss some of the community efforts. What does the community want and how we can move that together?
Right. And tonight, I, I spoke with Mr. Walker and the administration, you know, we're going to absorb the comments, um, you know, before we take a vote or anything.
No, I appreciate that.
And like Steve brought up the baseball fields and the access and some of the, some of the things that, that'll be tweaked in the lease. So, uh,
Yeah.
We'll get all our, our, our discussion in tonight and we'll come back again.
No, I appreciate that. I just, and, and to finish up, you know, as a parent of, of, of children who did use the, um, the soccer fields, I mean, there's so many people who have used those soccer fields, besides the point of not being able to ever allow your child to walk to the soccer fields, because you did have to drive. So you had to actually add another 45 minutes in your day to go to the soccer fields. When you did get up there, um, you know, the, 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 the people who were running the soccer groups would have to either rent generators to put lights up there or they would park around in circles with their lights on so that kids could play soccer, because the field, it would get darker. So these are things that, you know, maybe as we get the community input, we might be able to figure out ways that we can improve these things as a whole that could benefit not only, again, our city, but our community in tying into those things. So, um, there's so many other questions that I'd have, like what would, this is one of the questions. I'm sure we're not going to get an answer, but again, you know, can this be sold? We have a 99-year lease with this association. Is this something that potentially, if down the road, could this, could, could this lease be sold to another owner of the golf course? And how does that work? Or does that change the lease? Um, or in a situation like Fernsbrook Golf Course, where we had a lease and they ran into some problems and the city ended up financially helping Fernsbrook Golf Course and then eventually taking over, I don't think we could do half the job. I don't think that's your goal, because I don't think we would do a good job. But, but you know, that's, those are the kind of questions that we do have to take into consideration. So with all that, there's so many things that, there's just so many touch points that we have to kind of go back and look at to be able to figure out, is this the best possible move for the city? And I'm not saying it's not, but it's something that we should be discussing so that we can be fully transparent to the taxpayers as to what they can expect. Because obviously in the first 50 years, there were some expectations. We were going to get trails. We didn't get trails. There's some confusion as to whether or not we have trails. So those types of things. And I have one other question for, um, Mr. Walker. I don't know when you said, if you could just explain the, and I, I know it's in the lease, but if you could just explain for the general audience that's out there, uh, the fees, you said 10% of the, was it gross or net? 10% of the gross for golf fees?
It's actually both, councillor. One is 10% gross of all golf-related revenue. That's rounds of golf, driving range, anything related to the activity of golf. The other piece is 10% net of all other activities generated by the facilities. That's the function facility, the restaurant, beer, alcohol, those sorts of things.
And then there was one, there was one other thing that somebody had mentioned to me and, and it was a, it was regards to Quincy High School and North Quincy High School access, um, for students to be able to play up there. I know that Fernsbrook Golf Course has been exceptionally well to the kids, our, our kids who are playing, but, um, from what I understand from Quincy High School and North Quincy High School, they told me that it continues to be a struggle for the high school side to get golf access. Um, and, and they said it was part of the old lease, but I think that's something that we wanted to take into consideration too. I'm, but again, I'm not suggesting that you're not doing it. It's stuff that people are telling us, but I think if we put all these things out on the table and we really take a look at it, there's going to be a way that we can put our, you know, put the best package together that will, that will be able to hopefully help everybody. But I, I can tell you as a West Quincy resident and Rashudy Drive and the access off of the highway, and I know, Mr. Walker, you said that you, that we're working with the state to resolve that. Without that being resolved, I'd say nothing should be able to happen. Not a 99-year lease, not a 50-year lease, not a five-year, even the 22-year lease I'm concerned with, because it is so dangerous. You can't go, you can't get across at all over there. If you go to the UPS store, never mind go up to where you guys are located, you can't get back out. So I, it's just, it's extremely dangerous. And, you know, that was done when they put that ramp and I believe it was put in originally, they did update it again, but I think it was put in because of the, the, the dirt coming in from downtown and it hasn't been updated. That's certainly something that we need to work better with the state on, but until those two things are worked on and combined effort to be able to see a real, we shouldn't be discussing, we shouldn't be approving a lease to go into the state until we have that figured out. That's just my personal opinion, but I do also think that there's so many things that we have to talk about before we'll even get to that point to be able to send this into the, into this, to, to get to an approval point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Yang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I was six when this was first discussed and so I, you know, was obviously not around to be, yeah, I was six. I know. Anthony's now younger than I am though, so I'm down. I don't feel like the youngest one on the council anymore. But honestly, to be able to, um, then use and access this space as an adult, right? My cousin got married up there. Um, I've held functions up there. I've been to functions up there. Um, I drive very frequently to the UPS store, um, to return a bunch of Amazon stuff. And I love using also the walking paths and even just the driving paths in the area. It's absolutely amazing. So I just, um, I appreciate the weight of this conversation being here, just because again, when it was first discussed, I was so young and now, um, again, being able to enjoy the benefits of the area and now being in a space where, um, you know, I'm one of nine voices to, or eight voices to decide what happens in the future, for future people, right? Uh, like myself, it's, I, I just appreciate the weight of it. And, um, I just want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking on this. Again, my, my sentiment and from what I've heard from folks here this evening and from folks, um, in the last few weeks since this was first introduced to the council is my general takeaway and understanding of it is that no one's at a no. It's a, hey, I just have some more questions and I want to be engaged in the process. And so I do appreciate this opportunity to do that tonight. Um, to that end, uh, to listen to Timmons, I know that you're here to answer some questions if possible, so I just have a few if you can clarify, since we are here this evening. Right, is he here to, okay, great. And if you can't, again, I know that this isn't the last meeting, so we can always come back and I know get answers, um, in the future. So the first one I have, uh, for clarifying issues, what was the, the term of the, um, the prior lease? It was 50 years?
I'm, I'm sorry about this and this is a complaint I've been making to Madam Clerk more frequently of late. I can't hear.
I talk really fast and really quietly, so I'll.
That's a common complaint of people who come to the podium that they can't hear. And I've noticed people straining back there. I know, I have a documented hearing issue, but I really think we need to do something about, and I'll raise it during this meeting in public. And this is no disrespect to Madam Clerk, because she has worked with me on more than one occasion on this and we've tried to come up with something. But I, I'd like to see it made a priority. I think it'd be helpful. If you look where the speakers are in the chamber, they have no relation to human hearing. And so people have been back there straining. I've been straining and I'm standing right here having trouble hearing you. So if you could speak up a little bit, you said something about the term of the prior one?
Prior existing, I guess, right?
The oh-four?
Yep.
Yeah, the oh-four is a 30-year. And, um, in 97, let me just, I'll go back over all of them. The amended and restated was, which is the oh, I beg your pardon, oh-two amendment. Um, actually, I beg your pardon, that was for a term of 50 years in 2002, the amended and restated. In 97, which is the, uh, the original lease, and in 97, as Mr. Walker pointed out during his presentation, that was actually termed a development agreement, because at the time, you know, we were trying to cap a dump. Um, so the, the term in 97. Do you know the term in 90, the original lease? Beg your pardon?
Fifty.
So they were both 50. Okay.
Okay. But as it stands right now, we're, the lease is going to expire in 2052 then, right? The current lease?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so if, I'm just thinking, I'm saying for time's sake, we're not voting on this tonight. If it were voted on in 2022 and passed in 2022, is it 99 years on top of the two, like the 2022 timeframe or on top of what's still remaining?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the other question is?
The point of this was to draw up a, a new agreement. In 97, it was a, a major project. And it was revisited by then Mayor Phelan in oh-two, because we now had a golf course and we could see what was going to happen. So it was based on the current climate in oh-two. Uh, we're revisiting it at this point, because we've seen how that golf course has worked over the past two decades and because the operator has some plans for how to work with, um, trends in the golf industry and what's happened at the course itself.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you're the one to answer my next few questions, um, or three, but, you know, again, if he can't, then we can always carry it through to the next meeting. Um, Mr. Walker had mentioned earlier that there is going to be the traffic assessment that's going to be addressed from DOT. Now, I know that we have a good relationship with the state. Do we have an idea of timeline for, um, just certain points of, is sort of just checking to see that we're moving in that direction? So whether it's, you know, them giving us an updated assessment or doing a traffic study or funding, like, do you know what I mean? Like, what are the points that we're trying to hit so that we know that there is going to be work and that we all, you know, can expect what's to come with the improvements?
That's one for Mr. Walker, I believe.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chairman. My knowledge on that project is that it's beyond the assessment. It's beyond the initial planning phase, that it's in the meat of design and engineering right now. Um, and when it reaches a certain point, as you know, councillor, it, you go through 25, 50, 75% on the state design program. Um, when it reaches a certain point, that'll be the, the point at which we can bring it back to the public for comments and that then triggers the next piece of the process. So we're right in the middle of it. I mean, this is a project that is on DOT's list. It's not just a, a dream or a, a vision at this point. It's on the list. Um, we're working through that design process right now. Um, and I would say in the very near term, we're going to have something to show the public and begin that, that comment period and then take it to the next level, the construction level.
But they haven't given you a sense of, um, within the fiscal year or, you know, this is, hey, this is going to take.
Yeah, I mean, I expect that to be months, not years.
I see. Okay.
That we'll be ready to, to show something.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is about the footpaths. You mentioned that is now something that we need to talk to DEP about. So I, I'm trying to just also, and because when I go, I just sort of park wherever I can park and just walk, right? Like, I don't look at my Google Maps to see where I am and, um, similarly, sort of like looking at this and not actually standing there. I'm a little bit confused and so I apologize. Is there somebody that can just clarify for me what is being considered if at all or where exactly the issues are? I just, I, I feel as though I don't have like a full understanding and I want to have a full understanding for this conversation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, I'd ask Mr. O'Connell to address that specifically.
Just to back up, I'm sorry. Thank you, by the way. I'm looking for it to your presence. But when you gave the history of how we got here, Mr. Walker, that's essentially what I'm looking for in detail for the, the walking paths, right? Like, where did it start? How was it part of the negotiations? Where are we now? And then sort of what's the future for it?
Mr. Chairman, Counselors, thank you very much for considering this matter. So the question is hiking trails?
Yes. Are the footpaths, right? Like the, the, the sort of, I think overarching concerns that I've heard from folks here this evening and folks who've called and emailed are traffic and the, the, the walking, the footpaths or the walking trails, whatever you want to call them.
First of all, I wanted to say that I agree with so very much of what was said here. There's, there's lots of questions and there should be many, many discussions. But as it relates to the hiking trails, when I first got involved with Granite Links approximately 15 years ago, I first approached the DEP to try to clear up any of the outstanding items. There were numerous, uh, wetlands that needed to be dealt with, uh, landfills that needed to be closed. There were the hiking trails issues that needed to be resolved. And I can say with absolute certainty that we were in compliance then and we continue to be in compliance now. So I know there's all kinds of people saying there are no hiking trails. So I know there's all kinds of people saying there are no hiking trails. I believe what they're saying is there are no hiking trails as they would like them to be across the golf course. We are in compliance with DCR. This map was the final piece of that process. It was accepted. Be happy to meet anyone up there, or understand, Mr. Chairman, that we might be having a field trip. Would love to walk those trails. If increased signage is a request, we'd be happy to work with friends on that. But these trails do exist, they have been built, they can be walked now, and the kids often vandalize and steal the signs. That's life. We would be happy to replace any signs that are missing, we'd be happy to enhance the signage if that would be helpful.
Okay, could you just, are you looking at the same, you're looking at the same map, right? That you have in front of you? Could you, so the yellow, I was trying to read through the lease as well, I got half right through it, so. But there was a section in the lease that did talk about the trails and said that it was highlighted in yellow. So what am I looking at with the yellow on this end, on the far left-hand side of the page? What's marked in yellow right now, but then there's some, it almost looks like from the aerial view, like, so on the, on the left side of your map, right? And I'm sorry, because this is like so far and so small from here. It looks like almost where it says gas company access road hiking, I think that says hiking trail? God, that's why we need our classes, I know. It looks like at the end of that, that there's almost like a clearing that looks like a trail too, but that's not a part of this, right? So again, that's why I'm just, I feel like I'm not completely understanding here that, do you see what I'm talking about?
I mean.
It's so small from here, I'm sorry.
Yellow dotted trails are the trails that were agreed to, would be created, were created, and DCR ended up walking the trails and signing off on this plan.
Okay, and so if there is any other trail that's not marked here, it's not actually like a public paved, you know, marked trail, correct?
We can certainly maintain any of the trails that are on the Quarry Hills leased property. DCR doesn't look favorably upon anyone cutting new trails or maintaining trails that are existing. I'd be happy to work with them if that would be helpful to the process, but basically, this is the plan that brought an end to the Section 61 findings on the matter of hiking trails. This is compliance. So literally, I've been there for 15 years, and this is the first time I've heard any issues about the hiking trails. So.
Okay. Okay. And I guess the last question I have just for tonight, then, and I want to finish going through the leases. Yeah, I know that earlier, Mr. Walker, you had mentioned that this is, or maybe you did, Mr. Chairman, that this is a conversation about our, about putting a home repetition in and not necessarily discussing the lease itself. But I love reading through leases, and I just am asking and wondering if there is an opportunity to discuss any items within the lease. Like you said, if there's more signage, and that's something that we can always, you know, sort of expect moving forward, or just, you know, is there, is there an opportunity for us to have, I think, productive conversation and collaborative dialogue with the lease itself? I see.
Well, there's going to be continued conversations and more meetings. I certainly want to address any concerns about the ball fields. They should be draining properly, they should be maintained, so absolutely, it's a conversation that will continue.
Okay, and I just want, sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a little bit, because I think I was the one who said, Counselor, that the order before the body is the home rule petition that authorizes the city to enter into the lease. By no means was I trying to suggest that this body, the members of the public or anyone else, wouldn't have the ability to weigh in, ask questions, comment, offer suggestions for the body of the lease itself, of course.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you. The last thing I want to say in this is, I think, more of a statement and maybe a question of opinion, but, you know, taking a look at this, and again, reading through the lease as much as I've gotten through it and hearing the conversations tonight, I think leasing it for 99 years, yes, it's a long time. I feel, though, hesitant to entertain a sale, only because if and when the lease ends, and there are some termination agreements that I have seen in here from what I've read so far, the land then always will come back to us, right? Even if I'm not the one sitting here 99 years, right? If we sell the land, I mean, that's it, it's gone. And yes, the tax dollars would be incredible and consistent, right? If and when until, God forbid, something happens to the business, right? Or it gets sold, and as a private owner of the land, you can sell it to somebody else who now privately owns the land, right? And we have a lot less, I think, control over that conversation. And so again, this was meant to be more, I think, of a statement, but also if folks have any thoughts on the opinion solicitor, or Mr. Walker on this, I think that, you know, just the thought of, okay, yes, this is a very long-term lease, again, that will outlive me. However, at the end of it, knowing that there are termination agreements within the 99 years, if something, you know, goes away, that doesn't, I think, favor either party, or at the end of the 99 years, whoever is sitting here can have another discussion about what to do with that property. I prefer it that way. I like it when Quincy has the control over our properties, and so those are my thoughts on it. There's a lot that, again, I still want to come back with, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that we have room for more dialogue. I think that the lease is quite extensive, and I look forward to continuing to talk to you all about it.
I did want to just state that no one from Quarry Hills has ever suggested ownership be transferred over. I think that this is an amazing success story, and we're trying to just continue that story. And a lot of people are questioning whether or not there's a master plan. There's 50 or 100 great ideas about how Granite Links should be reconfigured. The process doesn't start with the master plan. The process starts with long-term site control. So really, this is the first step, which would allow us to take a step back and reevaluate parking, and reevaluate, should we have a hotel up there? Reevaluate, should we be expanding the restaurant? Should the pro shop be at the top of the hill? There's 100 ideas that this team has, and they're all very expensive, and they will be financed over a long period of time, and that's what this is about. So if we don't have that term, we don't act as if we are the long-term leasehold. It's just one of those fundamentals of finance. So I think Mr. Walker said it best, it really is about significant capital improvements requiring long-term leases.
No, I agree. And look, I just think that, it's like I said at the beginning of this conversation, right? From what I've heard tonight and from what I've heard from other folks who've reached out before this evening, it's a matter of just being, you know, being heard and being part of the process, right? I mean, they're here, you all are here, I know you all, you know, on both sides of this sort of aisle here, right? I shouldn't say it like that, but what I need to say is that you're all from Quincy, you all are passionate about Quincy, what happens with the future of this property. Take the opportunity tonight to talk with one another, right? I think that, my sentiment, and I'm happy that we got to hear from you as well, I really feel as though this is a matter of just wanting to get together and collaborate on what the future of the site is, right? We have REITs benefits from it, full stop, right? And so if we're going to move forward with it, why not continue to have open dialogue? And it sounds like you all are open to that, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeMona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? You got me on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nope, there it is. Can you hear me, Mr. Timmons? I'm going to talk a little bit later about what you talked about, and will pertain to Quarry Hills tonight in this particular ordinance committee. Thank you. I did attend the September 8th meeting up at Quarry Hills with Counselor Palmucci, now Judge Palmucci. I think some of the biggest items that were in that discussion was the intersection down at the bottom. I mean, that was pressing on every person that was in there. I mean, Granite Links employees, to residents that live in the Rashudi Drive area, to people like Steve and myself that go up there for the baseball games. I was coaching my kid at Junior Farm, nine-year-olds up at Quarry Hills, there's games at 5:45. So there's really a long line of traffic going underneath the bridge at Curry Hardware getting through, and at that time, it's rush hour, so it's very difficult getting across there. I think the biggest issue that was in that room on September 8th was not only a long-term fix, but a short-term fix, something that we can get after now, tomorrow, in the design phase now. And then, if we have more solutions and we try something, maybe we can get a long-term fix. That's just my, what I've heard in the room, what my personal opinion is about. If folks see some action, I think it's going to benefit folks coming into the area. It's going to also allow more visitors to come in instead of bypassing it, and I think it's going to be really beneficial for the residents in that area, Rashudi Drive. A long-term fix is considering the UPS store, maybe even taking that and adding some area in there to allow some bypass. I think another long-term fix, as crazy as it sounds, is a possible bridge that goes over. If you're going to make a huge investment, you've got to consider all the options. That's a long-term fix, it should be considered. I believe that Quarry Hills is one of the best attractions in the whole city of Quincy. I attended a wedding over the summer, and it was a beautiful wedding. But the problem was, is a lot of the people at the wedding wanted to stay up there and enjoy, enjoy that scene, and they weren't able to stay like a hotel overnight in that particular area, they had to go elsewhere. But I hope that's the vision. I think that's a beautiful vision. I think it'd be an unbelievable attraction for the future. I think it'll be a good tax base for the city. But you have to look at public safety as number one criteria for this, and that intersection, that crossing down at the bottom of that hill is a terrible, terrible way. It's angled where it goes this, I guess it's almost like a 45, where it should be almost a 90, and it's very dangerous. So I know we're in the mass DOT stages, but that has to be, in my opinion, speed-tracked and taken care of as a short-term fix. I hope by the time we get to the baseball games this summer, that something, some type of action has occurred, whether it needs all stakeholders, whether it be everybody up there, the Granite Links, the city of Quincy, mass DOT to sit down and say, what can we do right now? So I'm speaking in behalf of the residents that live in that particular area, speak in behalf of the visitors that live there on a daily basis. As I was, and I don't want to make a wrench in this, but as I was leaving the Good Scout breakfast the other day, I was coming down the hill, and there was a vehicle sitting up on top of the island in an accident. So, you know, weather conditions can change a lot of things up there as well, with wet surfaces, snow, obviously, and I just want to see everybody benefit from that crossing. Really, my main items, I'm glad that the trails have been discussed here tonight. I know that's very important. I've talked to the group over here about possible getting some signage up if they're vandalized or missing. So I hope that that's into consideration. We're all trying to work together here. I think this was a good discussion tonight, it was a good start. I attended the meeting, I wanted to see what was talked about. Obviously, Counselor Palmucci, in his absence of what for, he did get the information out to the abutters to make sure that they were there, and I did see a good group of Rashudi Drive residents in the meeting that night. And, you know, I just hope that some type of action's done at that crossing. I mean, that's one of the major particular areas of the city that needs to be mitigated. So, I mean, I'm not going to put it towards any of the lease conditions, but it's something that's on my mind. As I was leaving that meeting that night, I says, you know, I got, I know Counselor Palmucci is going to be leaving, become a judge, and he was, that I'm going to speak about getting that crossing mitigated right away. I know a long-term fix might cost a little bit more financially, but we can definitely do something in the short term to alleviate, get some action done on that bottom of that crossing. So I think all the answers and all the questions have been asked by my colleagues, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page with that crossing. I think it'll also benefit all of you, and we all know that. And I want to make sure that everybody at the table, all the stakeholders, get a chance to weigh in on that and get that speed tracked. So that'll be my top priority for this particular vote. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just, I'll wrap it up a little bit. I love the idea, Mr. O'Connell, of possibly working with Judy and the Blue Hills folks to come up on a Saturday, or maybe a late Saturday, to take a little hike, or take a little, you know, peak, you know, whatever day's good, we don't get hit by golf balls. But I'd be open to that, because what you guys have done, the Hannans and the O'Connells, I said earlier, I was on that advisory board. Mayor Phelan put me on in 2002. Counselor Brian Conley appointed me on there. When we first started, there were 80 people on, there were people coming out of the woodwork, because, number one, it was, the dump was going away, and number two, it was golf. It dwindled down to the local folks in the Rashudi Drive area, but it was a good board. And I also worked for a landscaper in Milton for a number of years, so I was in that dump a lot, in the back road there, on the Milton side, and for what it's transformed. Every time I get to that point, when I'm trying to find my ball in the woods up there, I start to laugh, because, you know, it was miles and miles of trash. And Walter Jr., his dad and I would always have long conversations, but one of the lines, and I mention it all the time, was to one of the abutters in Milton as it was going down, and everybody was kind of complaining back then, also, it's a dump, you're going to turn it over, it smells, everything else, but Walter Sr. had that comment of, well, if you give us some time, there won't be seagulls flying over your house, there'll be golf balls. And that's on hole six on the Milton side. And it's just magnificent. To work in a way, you know, for the existing trails, you know, signage, and go up with the Blue Hills group to take a look, I'm wide open to suggestions. I know the administration is also, all the points, you know, the fields went in, I went up there when the fields were brand new, and, you know, being capped, we had difficulties for the longest time. There weren't lights up there, there was a battle on that with the cap and everything else. You know, the entrance end, coming up off of Rashudi Drive, and then the exit too. I know these are all things that can be tweaked and taken care of. And just FYI for the Counselors, there are 45 trails up in the Blue Hills right now, 125 miles of trails up there. So, you know, this just, I don't know if this is included in that number, that's a pretty big number. So, and Blue Hills, as Mr. Purdy O. said, is very, is used often by everybody in the surrounding area. I also received, just for the record, the written communications that'll all go into the record, and I received a lot of emails from folks in the Blue Hills and constituents, pretty much the same. I mean, this group here kind of capsulated the issues of the trails and some of the concerns, and I think the administration and the council along with Quarry Hills and the residents can work it out. So we'll keep this in the ordinance committee, we'll, I'll hook up with you, Mr. O'Connell, we'll talk, and we'll talk to Judy and whoever the lead person is, and we'll put something together sooner than later, and get up there before it gets cold, and take a walk around and talk, because it's just a big positive. John Roderfield went on and on, and at the end, you know, he nailed it. So, you know, it's just a big plus, a big positive for Quincy. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting, and we'll go to the full council meeting. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you, guys, for being here.
We are back into session for the regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
Number one, traffic parking alarm and lighting TPAL update. Director Edward Grennan Jr.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get started, I just want to let the Counselors know, we're going to be installing Rule 10, which is each member will be allowed up to 15 minutes for the first round, and then for the second round, everyone will get five minutes. And before we open it up to Director Grennan from the TPAL, the Traffic Parking Alarm and Lighting Division, which is fantastic, this is our third set of series. We've had DPW Commissioner Al Graciussi in here, and we've had Dave Murphy of the Natural Resources in here, and now Director Grennan will be in here for our third series in front of the city councils here tonight. So with that, Director Grennan, you have the floor.
Counselor, Counselors, President DeMona, thanks very much for the opportunity to present you tonight. With me is traffic engineer Allison Rule. I know you all are familiar with her and her wonderful work. So we want to just give you a rundown of things that we have going on in the department. We don't currently have any bonded capital money, but we do have a number of initiatives and projects that we're working on that we're excited to share with you today. So we're going to kind of break it up into four categories of project and initiative: safety, capacity, bicycle, and transit. To start with safety, a good way to start here is that we have, as a department and in collaboration with a lot of other city departments and stakeholders, created the city's first transportation safety action plan. And what that is, is a, basically a playbook for strategies and a master plan to look at some deficiencies we have in the city and how to tackle those. So the plan creates a playbook to move towards the goal of zero serious injury and fatality crashes by 2040. That is an ambitious goal, but it's one we think we can meet. That is an ambitious goal, but it's one we think we can meet. The process of this was a deep look at the crash history over the last five years, which would have been years 2017 to 2021, was looked at with an emphasis on fatal crashes, serious injury crashes, particularly those that involve bikes or pedestrians. I think it's important to point out, this is something that municipalities all over the country are getting in order. It is going to be a major key to unlock federal money that is coming up. The transportation bill, as we all know, has a great opportunity with funds, and this is a gateway to those monies. As I said, we did, the call was to initially do a five-year analysis of the crash data. What we really, after looking at it, wanted to expand that. We did a 10-year look at crashes, which really allowed us to spot any trends, any areas with significant deficiencies. As you can see on the slides, we have been trending in the right direction over the past five years. The crashes are down. We hope it keeps going that way. And, you know, while we created the playbook, a lot of the plays in the playbook we're already using. So we're seeing the results of those in our current analysis, as you can see in these Some major results of the study were a, not the study, excuse me, the creation of the plan or solutions, large-scale solutions in our troubled corridors, such as the ones you see above. The slides you're seeing are, there's one for a Granite Street at Whitwell that is a corridor that we have identified as having some, a higher crash experience that we'd like. The other is the intersection of Furness Brook Parkway and Adam Street, which is a DCR intersection, but we did want to take a look at all city intersections, not just those owned and maintained by the city. Moving from that to talk about some of the projects that we currently have ongoing, I know that you have all seen them across the city, the speed feedback signs. There are 36 that have been installed on 24 streets. We have 12 more units that are going to cover six streets funded. This has been a very popular initiative and something that we've seen great success and great feedback from the residents from. RRFBs, the flashing pedestrian crossing signals that you've seen pop up all over the city. We have 27 of those installed, five more are funded, and seven more are in various stages of planning. A project highlight, so this is Quincy Avenue. This is a little bit of an older project, and the reason we wanted to include it is that we've had a lot of time to reap the results of this. This was a corridor that had a lot of crashes, a lot of serious crashes. What we did here is we road dieted it. We went from four lanes to three lanes. We added bikes, bike lanes, we added pedestrian crossing facilities. Some results of that, they've been encouraging. There's been zero serious crashes on this road since this has gone in. A more recent project is the intersection of Southern Artery and South Street. This was funded through a grant from Mass DOT. What we did here is we did a curb extension at the corner. What that has done is slowed the turning speeds of vehicles turning from Southern Artery to South Street. It shortened the crossing distances, and we made total ADA upgrades, new APS buttons, ADA ramps. This is something that we're excited to see the data from as we go over the next couple of years. What you see in front of you here, this is a indication of the pedestrian data that we're able to get from our detection cameras. We have MyoVision detection cameras that help us in detecting the traffic. They provide remote monitoring so that we're able to respond to issues in the field from our office. But another benefit of that is that it provides all sorts of data and analytics, you know, such, I wish I had my glasses. So you see pedestrian counts, you see pedestrian delay, pedestrian compliance, all the sort of risk indicators that allow us to make decisions on changes that should be made at intersections. So we have these cameras in 44 of our 110 intersections, with an additional 18 being funded through mitigation and grant funding, and no city dollars spent on those. Safety improvements, some education outreach that we've done. We've partnered with Mass DOT, the Traffic Safety Division, to be part of a couple of campaigns that we've been excited to be a party to. This one is Be Seen, Be Safe. We distributed reflective strips and educational materials, a couple of schools, a few local businesses. We've also been party to safety videos that have been put out by the, excuse me, the Mass DOT. We're revamping our website. We're currently in the process of getting that a little more legible for our residents. You know, we're going to add some project profiles that are, you know, one sheet, easily distributable profiles that really tell the public what we're doing and what the benefits of these projects are. Some upcoming projects, some of these are not directly overseen by our department, but we will certainly be extremely involved in it. A couple that we'll point out, key ones, C Street, the soup to nuts reconstruction of the road that's from Quincy Shore Drive to Palmer Street. There's multiple key intersections that we'll go through there. Bike facilities, pedestrian upgrades, we're excited about that. We are Rashudi Drive at Willitshey, the off-ramp that got a lot of questions. And to give you kind of an update where we are on that project, the project's at 25% design. We had a comment resolution meeting. The next step would be to schedule with the DOT a public comment meeting. We're anticipating that will happen sometime January or February of this coming year. From that point, after all the comments are brought in, the, you know, the design team will get back together. It'll move towards 100% design. At that point, it'll be turned over to DOT for funding. A little bit of a backstory on Rashudi Drive since it did come up. This has been in discussions from the city side since 2018, that it was brought to the state. We said, hey, we think that we have a problem here. What the state basically said is prove it. We proved it. They didn't want to touch it unless we could prove to them through analysis that there was a warrant for a signal to be there. Once that was proved, they basically, you know, started to work with us on, you know, a traffic audit, a safety audit. We have a firm, Fussman O'Neill, working on the design that we are party to. We have basically assumed the burden of proof in design for that intersection. We're very much looking forward to getting it to a point where we can hand it off to the DOT for funding and construction. Some projects on the horizon from the city side, we recently received a $366,000 grant for Washington Street. That is for upgrades to the transit signal priority and bus network, some, to make the buses more dependable, better to use, and also gives us a good opportunity to upgrade our detection in that corridor on the traffic signals. Adam Street at Whitwell Street, traffic calming, visibility treatments for pedestrians. We've had a public meeting on that with Counselor Phelan. We have some great feedback from that that we're incorporating to, as we move towards a final concept and design on that. And then West Quanum Street is another grant, I believe just over $200,000, that we received for pedestrian improvements over at the intersection of West Quanum, they had in Arlington, oh, kept shot, excuse me. That I'll turn it over to Ms. Rule.
Hi, everyone. So Eddie touched very greatly on a lot of the safety initiatives that we're working on within our department, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, traffic volumes in the city. Traffic volumes in the city and what we're doing to help move traffic, because obviously we want people to move safely but also efficiently through the city. I know that's a big concern of residents. So what we have here, and this is made available by our detection platform, MyoVision, where we're able to get diagnostic information from the traffic signals. So this is a snapshot of Washington Street at Southern Artery in May of 2019, back when traffic conditions were largely considered typical. We've had interesting several years of atypical traffic conditions, but, you know, this is what things looked like pre-COVID. So flash forward to the same Thursday in May, three years later, May of 2022, we're seeing an increase in traffic, but generally, traffic patterns have been restored to normal or greater than normal conditions, or greater than 2019 conditions. Very noteworthy is the increase in multimodal travel. In that timeframe, we did add bike lanes on Washington Street. Thankfully, we're seeing a great increase in cycling activity. Commiserate with that improvement, seeing more pedestrian activity, more people walking around. Just the daily number of travel up 5.5%, which isn't out of the realm of what we'd expect for typical growth over three years, but still growth nonetheless. And this intersection really does help represent travel regionally through the city. At Washington and Southern Artery, you have folks like myself on the wrong side of the bridge that come into the city every day, and then also local travel around this area of the city. So a few projects that we've been working on to help improve traffic flow around the city. Eddie touched briefly on it, the Washington Street multimodal improvements. We received a grant from Mass DOT through their Shared Streets and Spaces program for $360,000. It helps in a lot of facets, but one way it really helps capacity is by improving the detection systems that are necessary for those intersections along that corridor. Franklin Street, that corridor, was identified as a local bottleneck, and we were able to receive grant funding from Mass DOT and their local bottleneck program to make improvements to the three traffic signals, School Street, Water Street, and Independence Avenue. Hannenberg and Parkway, we've internally done some phasing improvements. You know, there's traffic queuing issues between that intersection and the parking way intersection. Longer term, we do have improvements to realign the parking way intersection with McCombe Way, but in the short term, we made some improvements to try and provide some relief for people traveling through that corridor. And C Street, timing and phasing improvements. At C Street in Cottington, I'm sure anyone, especially us folks at 55 C Street, leaving the DPW in the afternoon, a lot of queuing on C Street, major corridor for travel, you know, between the South Shore and Boston. And we've provided some changes to the traffic signals, some improved coordination between that and McGrath Highway to keep the queuing from extending back into the intersection and just minimizing queuing on C Street. So I can attest, it's certainly been easier to get out of the driveway at 4:30. All right, and I'm going to turn it over to Eddie to talk about our bicycle network.
Thank you. So before you is the map of the current bike facilities, both constructed and planned in the city of Quincy. We are currently over 10 miles of designated bike facility. In 2020, we were designated a bike-friendly community. Since then, we have added six miles of bike facilities, or are, that have been added or under immediate construction. The two that we're looking at right now are Adam Street between Whitwell and Furness Brook Parkway, and Willidshey Street as part of the DPW's reconstruction of the road. There are 5.5 miles of bicycle network at various stages of planning, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, we are looking at, you know, when roads come under construction, we use it as an opportunity to see if there's feasibility for bikes to be added. We get a lot of guidance from the Bicycle Commission, which is something that our employees are very happy to serve and work with that group. Quincy Golds is another group that is extremely well-attended, and we are, have a close working relationship with them. We look forward to adding more bike paths, both on and off-road as we move forward.
All right. You're so much taller than me. Just to touch briefly on some of the transit improvements that we've been working on. So just to take a small step back to 2018, this council provided us funding to do traffic technology upgrades at several of the intersections. And included in that was an emergency preemption system that's GPS-based that we have at several locations across the city. Through conversations with the MBTA and the manufacturer of that equipment, we found that that GPS unit's also able to communicate with the automatic vehicle location system that's in the MBTA buses. So we've been working on transit signal priority, which basically the GPS unit has zones that are programmed, and as the bus passes through those zones, the signal takes in that information, sees how close the bus is coming, and then tries to hold the signal green until the bus passes through. The key thing that, you know, the MBTA gets in feedback is people don't want to take transit because they don't feel that it's reliable. They don't know when the bus is coming, they don't know how long their trip is going to take. So this is an initiative to try and help improve that reliability. And I would just note that we are a leader in New England for transit signal priority. The MBTA is also using Quincy as a case study for a paper to be submitted to the Transportation Research Board. So we're very proud to be on the front end of this technology. And with that, thank you for allowing us to present, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before I open it up to my fellow counselors for comments and questions, Director, I just want to thank you for bringing in the Traffic Engineer Allison Rule. I see Ally all over the city walking around and checking on things, and I've seen in all the community meetings. Really appreciate that because when I first got into the city council in 2016, it was very difficult to get the traffic engineer out of the office. So thank you so much, Ally. It's a constitute, thank you for coming out. So with that, counselors, I open it up, I'm going to go, Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ally, Ed, thanks for coming. Really no questions, just a lot of thanks for the countless meetings that I've come down to the office, you know, and all the projects that were dealt with. I know C Street will be coming up in the next couple of years, which will be a big project. There's been a lot of action in Ward 1, but all the small things do count. Signage, working with me with the MBTA stops, everything under the sun that I either came down to talk to you, Ally, about traffic, or Ed, you know, and the many conversations we have on different things. They get taken care of within, you know, 24 hours. There's somebody down there not only addressing the issue, but possibly even talking to the resident that called up. So I know the Ward 1 folks have been very impressed with some of the things we've done and some of the things that are tough to do when an intersection that's busy and they want everybody to go slow and everyone to, you know, obey the stop signs. We've, you know, got a little creative at different places without really putting too much signage up, and I think it helps. So Ed, it's been a big plus, and Ally, you know, I enjoy both you folks, working with you, and I know, you know, when you get something, you run with it, and you take care of it from A to Z. So thank you very much, and great presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. It's a pleasure working with you. You know, we're lucky to have the staff that's been in place to be able to respond to those things as quickly and as creatively, as you put it, sometimes, so very lucky.
Counsel Liang, you have the floor. Thank you, Counsel.
I just want to quickly say and start with that, you know, when Chris Cassani was with his department, he did remarkable things, I think, with it, but then when the two of you, you know, have taken it over ever since, and the team of people you work with, I mean, it's been remarkable to see the improvements across the city, the response rates to constituent concerns. I mean, it's, I can't sing your praises enough, and so I want to start by actually singing your praises. I just have one question for you. So you all are, again, are doing remarkable work, and if we could just put everything in your hands, that's kind of how I would just like to see it happen from now on. What I'm getting at is, I love the goal, and I think it's ambitious, like you said, to strive towards zero serious injuries and fatalities by 2040. My only concern, and I just want to voice it here, is not with you all, it's the fact that we have many roads in Quincy that we have little control over because they're not Quincy-owned, right? I'm talking about state-owned DCR roads, and I'm not saying that we don't have a good partnership with the state, of course we do, and obviously, that's clear in the funding support that we've got to make the improvements we need to see across the city on, you know, various things that we've needed. I just want to make sure that, logistically speaking, when it comes to your department's very ambitious goals, which I think- very ambitious goals, which I think you all accomplish, right, so keep them up, is there anything, again, that we need to be mindful of that you might come across as, I guess, barriers to achieving your goals? And if there aren't any, you can think of off the top of your head, I just want to put it out there, that I do recognize that you can't fix all the streets in Quincy that you want to because they're not owned by Quincy, right? And so I guess it's a question that you don't have to, again, answer right now, but if there are any issues or things that come up that you can think of, that we could be helpful with, to ensure that you do meet this kind of very ambitious goal, I want to know about it, for sure.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. That is certainly something that, you know, we've taken into consideration when making this goal. We do have a, a number of streets, so many of our largest intersections are not under the control of the city, they're under the control of the state. We do have great partnerships with those agencies. We did include all of those streets in our analysis, just because we didn't think it was right to leave them off with their, their in Quincy, the Quincy residents using them. So, you know, we will certainly be striving to work with them, to get them on the same page as us. The state has made similar goals recently, so we're, we're hoping to be in lockstep with them on this side of initiative, and, you know, this is going to certainly take help from everybody to get there. So I appreciate your, your, your ability to come to us, and we'll certainly be coming to you with, you know, any questions, any help we might need along the way.
Yeah, please, you guys are setting the standard, and when it comes to some of those, I'm looking at the, the graphs here, some of these fatal crash and serious injury crashes are on DCR-owned roads, and so again, just, I appreciate that you're taking them into consideration, you're looking at the numbers, you're putting that information in front of us, and again, you're, you're setting a very high goal, but yours also setting the standard to get it done, so keep at it, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, you finished? Yes. Okay. Counselor Andronico, you have the floor.
Thank you. Ed, Ally, thank you so much for the presentation tonight, and I always love presentations that show a lot of data that can give us an idea of where we've been, where we are, and kind of where we're headed. Just comments pretty similar to, to Counselor McCarthy. I think the steps that you and your department have taken have been noticed by at least my constituents, you know, I, I think, when looking at that map, a lot of Ward Two, and sort of the big four over there with Washington Street, Southern Artery, Franklin Street, Quincy Ave. You guys have taken a lot of steps to improve the safety of those areas in particular, and I know it's always a work in progress, and usually when I give, at a call, he says, oh yeah, we've already thought about that, and, and here's kind of where, where we're at and where we're headed. So that's greatly appreciated. I always, I like to know that when I pick up the phone to give you guys a call, that you'll get right back to me about these concerns. Just keep doing what you're doing, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, Counselor. Counselor Mahoney, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. So I'm just going to go over a few things, and I noticed that in your presentation, so one of the things that we didn't go over was, it's, it's just, you take care of so much that's going on in the city, but also the garages in Quincy and the parking, so I didn't see that in the presentation.
Sure, we, we kind of looked at this as more, those are ongoing operations, we wanted to kind of focus on the, the improvements, the, the project initiatives that we have going on, so.
I think the initial request, though, was like, anything that brought in revenue, anything that was costing the city to be able to show the budgets, and I'll have to give an A to the DPW, because they actually came in and said, this is what the cost of these projects were, not that you don't, because you said at the beginning that you don't necessarily have budgets for these, but we do have Fosse &amp; O'Neil, it's being, who's, who's charged with some of that work. Where is that money coming from? How are we accounting for those types of things? That was what the initiation of this kind of conversation was. It was, it's, it's also about all of the projects, but it's also about, you know, the finances of what you're doing and how you're getting these things accomplished.
Sure.
So, and it's, it's just, it's just, and I, the same thing happened with the, the Commissioner of Natural Resources, you know, he was mentioning it as he went, but it's just, it's easier if we can have that kind of broken out as to like, where, where is that coming from? Like, I know, like, when we were meeting with Whitwell, the Rotary part of Whitwell, it was identified, I think, that there was some mitigation money that was coming from Fox Rock, but it was, I think it was, I don't think it was completely, maybe you can answer that, is Fox Rock paying for the Fosse &amp; O'Neil study that we're doing for the Rotary, or is that coming from the city, at some other place in the city?
Sure, so, yes, the mitigation funds from the 114 Whitwell project are, that is what the design of the intersection improvements at Whitwell and Adams is being paid for right now. Correct.
And I think it was identified at that meeting that we're not sure where the, you know, the development of the cost, the, the money that would cost to actually develop that, if that was to go through. It hasn't been decided that that was going to be something that we would do, but that would be something we'd have to identify. That's, that's, it's not a criticism, it's just, it's just a note that, that was kind of the, the flavor of what we were asking people to come before.
Sure, you know, and I-
But this is also great, I mean, I know that you guys do a ton of work, so it's just, it's just that, to be fair, that's the, the initiative was that, we do an awful lot of work in the city of Quincy, and then the question is oftentimes is where is some of these things being funded by?
Sure.
Like, I also know for your, I believe, I think, the Southern Artery, C Street, McGrath Highway, I think that's, is that being funded by the, the police public safety headquarters?
Correct.
I mean, it, again, this would be for transparency for the departments, what you're working on, and how it's interacting with some of the bigger projects that we're working on, but without that, we have to kind of piece it together. Or we, the city council that sit here, may know it, but the general public doesn't know where those things are coming from. I know that the C Street corridor, that's something that we're working with the MassDOT for, because that's another thing that we've been working with. So I mean, there's certain things that we are working through. And then the Rashudi Drive piece, we had extensive discussions about that earlier this evening, you know, and that's playing into a whole other piece, but if you understand, I'm just trying to get at the transparency of how-
Yeah, totally understand.
-we're working as a, as a city as a whole. And it's very difficult as a city council to keep track of everything.
Sure.
So a general constituent at home is completely, you know, relying on us to be able to ask those questions, and oftentimes, we don't have the answers for them.
Sure, and I'm sorry that I-
It's okay.
-you know, misunderstood and didn't provide all that, I'm, I'm happy to get you any of that, that you need, and we can figure out a way to share it.
So one of the comments that I had was with the garage, I think it was in the paper that the garage is not at full capacity, and, and that's something I'm just interested in learning a little bit more about, as to where we stand now. I think some of it may have had to do with COVID, maybe that's changed since then. It was just recently reported in that particular case, and also over, I think, over by the Ross Parking Lot, that parking lot that we have over there, just the revenues that we're bringing in. I think it's enough to be able to offset what we're doing, but at the same time, it's just something that we want to try to keep track of. Then in regards to, the other thing was the permitting, parking permitting that are happening throughout the city. I know there's certain areas that you've been doing that, and, and I know, we've talked before, Ed, where it's like, certain sections of the city have to deploy people out, how many people do you have doing the ticketing for you at this current time? I know the police do it during the after-hours for things, but, you know, we have a lot of ground to cover, and how is that, how are you handling that?
Sure, okay, so the garage, your question is about the, the revenues that are coming into the garage?
Yeah, and also the capacity of the garages, are they full? What are we seeing that's happening at those garages?
Sure, so what I'll tell you is, the, the garage on a day-to-day basis has availability for parking there. We have a robust business parking program that has over 500 customers. We also have residential parking in the garage, so on like a per-numbers garage, if everybody were to show up on the same day, we are, you know, a lot fuller than it would appear to be if you drive through there. That's a good place to be.
I guess if you, you don't have to do it, I'm not asking you to know this off the top of your head, but I know the residential parking in the garages, those are deals that we made with certain buildings.
Correct.
If you could just maybe, just to refresh us, because I think there is the, the O'Connell Building that definitely uses some of the Kilroy Parking Lot Garage, but I think also the LBC also has a piece of that too. So if you could just let us know what the percentage of that is that's going out to residential parking?
The percentage? I can tell you that LBC has 150 spots leased to them.
Hmm.
They're currently using short of 100. And I could, Mr. O'Connell's Building, they have, I believe it's 156 spaces, that is nested parking that's in the basement.
Okay. And how many total spaces do we have in that garage?
712.
So that leaves us 400, and then we have, you said that you have business people that are leasing spaces to, how many of those are being leased by 500, did you say?
Approximately. So I could get you that final number.
So that leaves us around 200 for just general people to be able to use, correct? Just anybody that's going to the square to, to be able to use? 200 spaces, approximately?
It would be lower than that, because the, the business parking is, the 150 spaces are nested.
Okay.
Approximately.
Yep.
And as it goes to the parking permits, the permit zones, we have five zones, North Quincy, Wallaston, Quincy Center, Penns Hill, and Salt Quincy, Quincy Adams, thank you.
So one of the things, and we had talked about this before too, though, over in North Quincy, I think some of the development that's happened over in North Quincy was designated transit-oriented development.
Sure.
And some of those condominiums that were approved in planning were told that that was a designated transit, but when they sold them, the people who bought them were told, oh yeah, you can park on the street, but you can get a permit, but they couldn't. Remember, I had this conversation?
Yep.
So, and you were going to give me back all of the buildings that, that were designated transit-oriented areas, that they didn't have parking, because that became kind of a relative conversation for that, so I never received that.
Sure, I mean, we have the list of all the addresses that aren't eligible for the program on our website, and on like four different spaces, I'm happy to get you that list.
Yeah, I think you added that to it after we had that conversation. The reason why I'm bringing that up, though, is because, you know, when you're, then these buildings are being sold, they're not being sold with that kind of caveat, because it's not part of the, it's not part of the condominium agreement when it was done, and that was some confusion for the people who were purchasing it. It's definitely in the court of, of the fact that they purchased it, it's Quincy's rules, but we have to be clear about those things. One of the things that I did like in your presentation, I liked a lot of things in your presentation, but one of the things that I wanted to call out, or just ask a question in regards to, was the, was the transit improvements, which was the, for the buses?
Yep.
And where, I know that, that there was money that was provided a couple of years ago, where, where are those, those crossovers that are, where are they located in the city?
Where are those units?
Yeah.
In Quincy Center, you, you would probably be, they're throughout the center. We've added the extension coming down Washington Street is where the grant that we just recently received is targeting, wrapping around to Soul Street, Howard Street, that direction.
Are there plans to have more of those types of things for, to be able to work with MBTA on that? Because I do know one of the questions that we've, is constantly being had, is that, you know, we want to be more of a walkable city-
Yeah.
-you know, and, and also a commuter city.
Yeah.
And I know that in the past, other counselors have asked also to increase bus routes, but to be able to do that, they had, the MBTA has to have people using those buses, and-
Sure.
-by having something like this, this is actually a positive thing for the city, because-
It's a great thing.
Yeah, because it's giving them the timing, an approximate time of when the bus is coming. I know when I travel to other, other cities or other parts of, other parts of the country that you, you know, you, their transit orientation is, is fairly well, like, it's a well machine.
Yeah.
And that's not to say that we're not doing it, it's, it's also the MBTA that needs to work with us as well. Does the MBTA help offset any of that, any of that cost that we're, the city's taken on, or is it something you're just working with them on?
So it's something we're working with them on. We've been, our initial investment in the technology was actually for an emergency preemption system for our police and fire to use.
Right.
And it was sort of after the fact that we realized that this same technology could be harnessed to coordinate with the MBTA buses and create this transit signal priority protocol that's been put in place. So since that original investment, the, the expansion of the network has really come via grant money. So that is how we are getting these things in our cabinets, and, you know, we are certainly kind of early in this, as Ally said, we're, we're a region, if not a country leader on this, we're working with the T on a case study to kind of prove that the way that we're doing it is the, what should be the standard nationwide.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking it's something that we will certainly be looking to grow through a partnership with the T. But it's something that I think is well worth city funds to do, because it makes the buses run better, which gets people on the bus, which gets them out of their cars.
I think there's other places in the country that do it much better than we do, but it's nice to think that we'll be the standard.
I'm saying we're a leader on the priority.
Yeah, there, I, I just know that I've used public transportation in other, other areas that, it's just, I mean, that's not a, that's a MBTA thing too, that's thing.
Oh, yeah, totally, yeah.
You know, there's, that's a universal problem, so if you could solve the problems for the MBTA, then we're doing great.
Let's help along a little bit.
The Quincy Ave site too. There is just a question, and I've called about this too, you know, when it comes to parking in the city of Quincy, we do have some challenges throughout all of our neighborhoods and all of our communities, and, you know, when we're in a, in a road that has a double yellow line, let's say, going down, it's a, a street with a double yellow line, there's not supposed, you're not supposed to be parking on the street, on those streets, are you?
No, you'd be in a lane of travel.
Pardon?
You'd be in a lane of travel.
You'd be in a lane of travel. So, and I've called about this, like, you know, I can say on Robinson Street-
Steadman Street.
Yeah, Steadman Street, Steadman Street.
Yep.
Constantly parking on the street.
Yep.
And it, it happens all over the city, and I, and I don't know whether or not you're doing it to try to maybe calm traffic themselves, because I know sometimes people will take it into their own hands by putting their own cars out in the streets to try to calm traffic, because people are going too fast down the street, but it's also not supposed to be what people are doing. So how do we handle those types of things?
So specifically on Steadman Street, there was a, a whole block that never had a double yellow on it, and that's where people were parking. We established a double yellow on that block to do a couple of things, to A, to narrow the lanes, to make speeding less feasible, to make people feel a little bit more boxed in when they're in that car, B, to establish a baseline that there shouldn't be cars parked in a travel lane on a road like Steadman Street that handles the number of cars that it handles a day.
And that, and that happens, again, this is, it's, it's Steadman Street, but I've noticed, and actually, it's funny, because in one of your presentations, you actually have somebody parked on the double, a double yellow, it's kind of off to the, the bike path is going down, this car kind of kiddy-cornered on the, on your picture.
It's probably our car when we were taking the picture, yeah.
It might be. It's okay, I'm not looking for it to tip anybody, I'm just saying, it's just kind of funny, because it's like, it's, it's, I notice it throughout the whole thing. One other question, and, you know, I, I, I do think like, the, the, being able to identify who's working on what, like, I think, is Fosse &amp; O'Neil the, is that the prominent engineer that's working, or group that's working on all of your projects in your, in your department? Or are there other ones?
Fosse &amp; O'Neil is currently working on the Rashudi Drive project, and then also the roundabout at Adams Whitwell.
Okay.
We work with McMahon, we work with, those are probably the two, the main ones that we use.
Okay. So, so if, and then the ones that were the, at MassDOT they're doing, where, are we have, are we reviewing, or who's reviewing MassDOT, when MassDOT is presenting, who's, who's reviewing what MassDOT is suggesting to do?
Are you talking about Rashudi?
No, I'm talking about C Street, the C Street corridor, like when they're-
It's beta group.
Beta group, okay. Is that us that's, is that our, our group, or is that the, Matt, the state group that's doing it?
They were hired, they were hired by the city, since it's a city roadway, so the city funds the design and, and chooses the designer, and then it's on the state tip for construction.
Okay. And then, and who's doing the Southern Artery, C Street, McGrath Highway, who's, who's working on that one? Southern Artery, C Street to McGrath, Access Management and Medium Division, Public Safety Headquarters?
Those would have been current.
Those would have been current, okay. Okay. So the last, the last, the last question that I have, and this is just a, this is, this is again where the interconnectivity happens within the departments, we talk about interconnectivity, but I'm not sure if it's really happening. And that's not a knock to anybody, because I think everybody has a lot of work on their plates, but, but when we're seeing, and I've seen this through zoning and planning, when people are presenting, every time you have a development that's being presented in the city of Quincy, it's presented with the intentions that there's a traffic, sometimes city of Quincy, it's presented with the intentions that there's a traffic, sometimes there's a traffic engineer that's presenting, sometimes there's not, but there's going to be zero, no impact to our streets in the city of Quincy. And we're adding a ton of cars potentially to that area. And it's, it seems to me that when we said, like, when you had your piece in here where it's like in 2019 prior to COVID, and in 2022 we see an increase. And oftentimes what we hear is that's cut through traffic that's happening in Quincy, but we have a lot, a lot of development that's happening. So how do you manage the development that's happening in Quincy and the roads and the traffic that we're dealing with? I know that you're moving it because you're trying to make the lights work faster, but it's a constant challenge. So I'm trying to, I'm asking because I, I really feel as though your department has a, plays a critical part in, in reviewing those things. And when it comes back with zero to no impact, especially on C Street, because there was a big F from the actual track, traffic engineer for one of the, for one of the plans that was before zoning, and it, there was no, there was no feedback from our side. So I was just curious to know, how does that get, how does that get handled? And it was because it was at five o'clock at night, and you were describing C Street to us about how hard it is for you to get out at the end of the day, but you've changed the, the, the lights and how they work.
Sure. So I, I think it's a multi-part question. What we do is we are certainly part of the planning review process. When we get, we get these plans sent to us, it's part of our purview to, to comment on that, to sniff out anything that we don't agree with, to advocate for the city and for its residents, to mitigate any sort of, you know, disturbances that we think may come from new buildings, new whatever is going in anywhere. I think Ally could probably speak to this a little bit better as far as the result of the traffic study. I think when they say the little to no impact, it's in the, you know, the scope of...
The plan.
You know, and it's in the scope of there being already at that intersection, tens of thousands of cars a day. So when we're adding, you know, less than a percent of cars, that would be the...
But the problem is, is everything's being looked F one-off. So if you're looking at something one-off, and this is here, and then two doors down, we have another one that's going to be 40, and another one two doors down, or in a neighborhood where you're coming out of a neighborhood and it's a development that's going to have six here, and 12 here, and 13 here, and 24 here, each one is being looked at individually as, as opposed to, and it's not, and sometimes it's because they're coming in separately.
Yeah.
But, but sometimes they're not. There's a bigger plan because the same people are coming back potentially a year later saying, now we're going to develop 24 across the street. So how do you manage that?
We manage it that we are the ones that are looking at it as a whole, kind of knowing what's going where, and using our strategies that we've established both, you know, before and during this process with the safety to make sure that, you know, any additional growth that comes, that we are ready to handle it, we are ready to make sure that any pedestrians that are coming to this project are adequately taken care of, any, that there's bikes, that there's bus facilities, that there's, you know, that we have room for growth. It's important.
Did you want to add anything to that? I think you look like, I don't know, you look like you, you look like you were trying to add something to it, so I'm not sure.
Sure. So I, I review, I'm having difficulty with this microphone tonight, I apologize. I review the traffic studies and developments that come in through planning and coordinate with the planning department on my findings of it. I guess the key things that I look for when I'm reviewing it firstly is everything that they've done correct to the appropriate engineering standards. Is the trip generation consistent with I E T standards? Is there...
So when you see somebody that's coming in and they have a, they may not have in the plan an F rating, but then the, the, the traffic engineer then says there's an F rating to it, is there any time that you kind of, in a presentation, do you kind of go back and go, wait, they didn't have an F rating there, but they were saying it's an F rating at five o'clock? I mean, I just, I'm asking this question because I think sometimes what's presented is one thing, but then if you actually go down and you're the, you guys work in traffic, so you'll know. But I mean, very often, we're, we're creating, we often hear, oh, it's not, this is, this is a cut-through city, it's not, it has nothing to do with all the development that's happening, but we're creating some of the problems that we have here. And I'm just, I, I'm not anti-development, but I am questioning, you know, when's the check and balance happen, when it's happening within a corridor or within a certain section? Because we can only handle so much, you know, so much more. And then we're going to, we're creating that, we're creating our own problems, we're creating our own, our own issues. So I'm a little confused when you say like, it's one-off, and we're still looking at things one-off, and we should be looking at things a little bit more holistically on streets. Because the lights can only handle what they can handle. I, I just, I, I need some form of an explanation for that if you can.
Sure. So I'm, they're following engineering standards for what they're including in their studies, and sometimes it is a little bit one-off, right? They have a capture area that, you know, I think it's within 5% of traffic increase anticipated for an intersection, that they would include that as part of their study area. And for larger developments, we'll have some kind of scoping meeting where we, you know, discuss with the developer what we'd like to see included and analyzed, and what our expectations are to certainly set the expectations early.
Could you tell me one development?
In their future projections, they would be required to include any development in the surrounding area to be included in their analysis. So as it relates to, you know, C Street, for example, if there's another development occurring down the street that comes in after another development, they would need to include that development in their analysis for their future projection. So then they baseline that future projection, and then look at the difference between build without, with and without their specific project.
And that hap, that helps, Sally, because I think, I think that's what I was getting at, is like, it's a little, it's a little one-sided when everybody says there's no impact to traffic, when everybody can look at it and say, there's definitely an impact to traffic. I mean, there are people who live in our city who can basically say, I used to be able to cross a street and not take my whole life in my hands, but now when I try to cross a street at a light that's red that says that I, that I have the crosswalk, that I'm still afraid to cross the street. Or I know we have bike paths throughout the city, which I went out for a ride on Saturday with Quinn, with Quinn Cycles, and I was like, you know, riding to meet you was scary, riding with you was not. But like, riding as a singular rider in the city of Quincy, it can be a little intimidating because, because cars just kind of ride up the back of your heels, and you're riding in the path that we're supposed to be riding in, or the path ends, and then it's like, well, where do I go now? Or, you know, like, somebody had brought up to me, you know, the General's Bridge has the, has the bike pass, and it tells you to take a right onto Bergen Parkway. Bergen Parkway is a highway, so you really can't take a right onto Bergen Parkway. So that safety-wise, you have to ride on the sidewalk, even though you're not supposed to ride on sidewalks if you're a bicycle rider, but you would never ride anywhere else because you'd die on Bergen Parkway if you rode your bike. So those are the types of things that, when you're seeing these things, and I know that you're working towards those things, but it needs to be clearer what we're, what we're accomplishing. And then also when development's coming through, I've yet to ever hear that our T-PAL has pushed back on any of the development as far as traffic engineering that's coming through, yet when the question comes up, or people talk about traffic in our city, what we hear back all the time is it's cut through traffic, and it's been going on since the, forever. But we're creating it too, so we have to own, we have to own some of that as well. So I'm just, I'm, and that's, I, I'm not going to drive this nail into the coffin any further, I'm just trying to say that that's something that we need to be a little bit better about how we're doing this. I think you do a fantastic job, but I also think you have a very challenging job as well, because, you know, you're inherently taking care of the things that are being, you know, created and handed to you because the traffic is going to come from those things. But you have a say in it too. But can you think of any projects that have come before us where you've pushed back and said, no, it's a bad development because of what's going to happen to our streets?
Um, sure, I mean...
I'm sure you have.
So I've...
We're going to finish up this question, and then we're going to move on to the other people. Go right ahead.
Okay. So often what I look for are ways to offset the impacts of the project and push for mitigation. So an example, like the Q up on Rashudi Drive, I know we talked a lot about Rashudi Drive, or you all did before we presented today, but, you know, the mitigation from that development, for example, and the magnitude of a quarter million dollars is funding the design for the traffic signal at the bottom of that hill. So we got something really positive out of that development, the mitigation for it. One specific project that we've pushed back on was something that was going in on Broad Street that me and Mr. Timmons ended up in, in court over due to the traffic impacts, so...
And that's great, and that's the, that's, that's the only reason why I really brought it up. If I could, if you could indulge me, just one last question, just one last question. So just one last question. So the one last question that I have was just with the Academy...
We're going to hold you off, hold on.
All right.
We're going to hold her off. You actually went five minutes over. Other colleagues still want to discuss, and we'll go back to you for five minutes. So hold that question, that one question. Okay, thank you. Counsel Harris, you are, then me.
So, so let, I, I yield to, so, so the trend of thought is the conversation, okay?
Minutes to wrap up her, her deliberation.
It's not, it's not going to take five minutes. So I thank you very much. And that was not meant to be a knock, it was just meant to be like, it is, it is a huge concern. People do not think that there's any pushback in the city of Quincy when it comes to things, and I know that there has to be. I can't imagine, in the wild, my wildest dreams, that there's things that come before you that you don't. Maybe there are things that you want to push back even further on, but you can't because, for whatever reasons, you can't. How does the parking, this is a, this is a critical question. So the city of Quincy's taken over the two buildings next to the Adams Academy, and it was purchased with CPA monies. Who's parking at that, those two lots? First of all, CPA money should never be used for a parking lot, that's, that's just a fact. But there's parking that's happening over there, so who's parking at the, those two, that, that parking lot that was created?
So the Historic Society has always had a relationship where they have people that are parking at the Adams Academy lot.
I'm not talking about the Adams Academy lot, I'm talking about the extended parking lot that's gone into the two, it was a germ, I think that was a germ, it was a, it was a funeral home and something else that was over there, I can't remember what else was over there. But those two buildings got taken down, and they were, they were raised, and there's a parking lot that's been extended. You go through the Adams Academy, but now there's more parking. So is it the Adams Academy that's parking there?
Counsel Mahoney, we also, I don't know, the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker.
Okay. Well, I just thought T-PAL because it was parking. That's fine.
As well.
Through you, Mr. President, those spaces are being rented by the bank that was displaced by the construction on Hancock Street, and potentially some construction vehicles as well from those two construction projects. But those, those are being rented, it's not free.
No. So I guess, is it being rented through T-PAL? Like, I guess I'm confused by that because I thought all parking went through T-PAL. Is it being taken care of through T-PAL, or who's it being taken care of through?
We, and the, some of the property that we have in the downtown, it falls within the district, it is handled through Granite, Granite City Partners, some of it's handled through T-PAL. In this particular case, I believe it's handled through Granite City Partners.
So as you can see, this is where, when I was asking for budgets and where you're, where things are coming from, because one would think that any parking that's happening in the city of Quincy would be going through T-PAL. And in this particular case, it's going through Granite City Partners, money's being collected, and we're not sure where that's coming from. And that goes back to the transparency issue, but that doesn't have anything to do with T-PAL. So I appreciate that very much, I appreciate that, Mr. Walker. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I also thank you very much for your, every time I call, your speed in which you get back in touch with me, and, and the fact that you're, whether, sometimes we don't resolve things right away at the first call, but we do resolve things over the course of time. So I do appreciate all of the work that you do do. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Harris, you're at the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, and Ed and Ally, thank you for your presentation. A few, few questions. First is what was meant, which was brought to my attention by Counsel Mahoney. The project at, in North Quincy by the high school, the, the, the buildings there at the T station.
Yep.
Right. So you did a great job with the traffic prior, I'm not saying you're not doing a great job with the traffic. There's an issue there that was brought to my attention, I actually saw it too. I don't think the traffic study took in account for the Target, the people that are going into the Target, and the lines from McDonald's during, especially the lunchtime and dinnertime. And it's causing backups that are not only inconvenient, but are, can be deemed a safety situation, where cars are going on the wrong side of the road to get around it, get around because they're impatient to get home, rightfully so. Can that be, can we do, can we have a study take place on that?
Certainly. Yeah, we're happy to look at that.
Yeah.
We'll do it internally.
Yep.
We'll, we'll take counts, we'll look at the signal timings for both that intersection and the intersection surrounding it. That's certainly something that we have the capability of doing.
That's, that's great. And, and this is also a compliment to the DPW for, this is on another issue, the streets, the streets, obviously with the new, the beautiful new sidewalks we've gotten in Squanum and different areas, different streets across North Quincy. But in particular, though, around Squanum School, those streets, folks have asked me to, to reach out to you folks to look at one ways, because especially with one street in particular, Park, which was a dirt road at, at one time, we have more folks traveling in different ways, plus the streets are narrower, they're narrowed to begin with, but with the kids and being able to walk, especially the streets around, that surround it, like May Flowers on one side, and...
Yeah.
You know, if we could take a look at that and see if we can maybe, because I, obviously I don't want to disrupt the neighborhood by, you know...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
But obviously, I'd really like to see us look at that because, again, especially we're going to have, hopefully, we'll be hearing about the, the new Squanum School, and if we can get ahead of that, maybe, but they just put those beautiful new, new sidewalks in alongside it, and it's, it kind of...
You know the story, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
I am, we hear it a lot, the DPW does admittedly a wonderful job on the roads, and people become accustomed over the years of parking up on the sidewalks.
Yep.
So this is certainly not a unique request, and it's definitely something that, if you'd like, we could sort of lay out some options for you. I, I would anticipate anything would be a bigger neighborhood conversation, so...
Absolutely. And that's something that, of course, I'd bring to the neighborhood.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll start, and then we'll have a discussion about like the scope and all that, happy to look at that.
That'd be great, great. And one last thing is, again, Counsel Mahoney kind of jodged something, the cut-through streets that are mentioned, and, that was mentioned in, especially in what, six? We all have cut-through streets, there's no doubt, but especially that go down to the beach, or go up from, or down from the beach. Like, for instance, I, I know that, oh, Mr. Walker walks out of the room because we were talking about it briefly before, before you, when you were speaking, but here he comes back. So when I, I asked for help, and you've been great, we put signs, we've done everything we can, except for, I asked about speed bumps. And way back when, before your time, both these times, I was told that speed bumps were illegal, and they, they don't exist. But in my new, for the last year, I've been driving around Boston because I have a new job, and I'm not, no longer here in Quincy Center, working, I'm driving around the city of Boston, and all these little streets that, that are really tight, there's speed bumps, and they're cut-through streets, and they're brand-new speed bumps. So was that a Marty Walsh thing, he was able to do whatever he wanted? Or, 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 and disregard of the law, or, you know, or are they illegal?
So I, it's a little wishy-washy. I think there's, there's a speed bump versus a speed hump. There, there's varying opinions over the effectiveness and if there's something that even should be on the road. What I would tell you is, from our standpoint, we don't think that it's a, a great solution. Generally speaking, from what we've read and what we understand, that the speed bumps kind of create just as many issues as they solve. They're loud, they damage cars, they're extremely difficult to deal with in times of snow and ice. Oftentimes, all it is, is a temporary slowdown, and then get on the gas and go to make up your, your lost time. It's nothing that we would recommend, we don't find it as a good solution, we think we have enough tools in the toolkit to address the issues without trying to do that. That's, that's where we stand and stood at this point. I'd ask for the opportunity on whatever road you're looking for to kind of play around with paint and signage and speed feedback signs.
You've done, you've done a lot for me.
Yeah.
Bayfield Street, that is one of the major cut-throughs.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, since, since, it was almost since day one since I've been in office, that folks have, we've been talking about Bayfield. I was hoping after I saw that they were in Boston, we could think about it, revisit it maybe, and take a peek at it.
We could, we could maybe like revisit the idea of it, but it, it's not something that we think is a good option. And the data on Bayfield is actually encouraging with what we've already done. We actually have a concept that I'm happy to share with you about Bayfield, particularly North Bayfield, getting cars a little bit tighter coming off the beach to slow them the beach to slow them down so that you don't kind of like whip around that corner that you're obviously familiar with.
Yes.
Those are the sort of things that we think are effective and, you know, frankly, quick and cheap to do also. So that's the solutions that we really kind of rely on.
Again, thank you for, for tonight. And any, and on those other two issues, it'd be great to...
Yeah, no problem at all. Happy to start working on those.
As always, you've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
It's great to work with. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Director, we, you know, traffic is the number one complaint that I get throughout the city. It really is. And with us establishing that T-PAL division, your, your, you know, traffic parking alarm and lighting, it's come a long way. From the inception of, you know, Mike Coffey and then Chris Cassani, your predecessor, did a real good job with getting out in the city and getting things done. And now you've done a great job in your role. It is something that's tough because we do, it is a cut-through city. And there's a lot of folks in the city just cutting through here. You know, as, as the Counsel for Brian Palmucci has left office, I mean, and gone to be a judge, I've taken over the role as of Ward Four and obviously have given you more phone calls in the last couple of weeks. And we, we have a vote later on about something.
Good to hear from you.
You know, it's been, it's been a totally different role as an at-large Counselor. And it's funny because when you're an at-large Counselor, you never really want to get involved in Ward Counselors' issues. So I can really tee off on Ward Four right now and not have to worry about one of the Ward Counselors stepping aside saying, you know, what are you talking about my Ward Four? So it's really, it's been a whole different experience as it is. But obviously, I've talked to you about Hall Place.
Yes.
Which is kind of that cut-through. I know there's some construction on the other ends. If we can get some data and some new studies on that. Upton Road has just popped up on here. Obviously, getting into Governor's Road, I know Quincy residents, Milton residents, is there anything going on at Upton Road that you can talk about on Ward Four?
Yeah, I'm actually happy to report we're in the middle of a, a pretty comprehensive study up there.
Okay.
We're doing soup to nuts turn movement, speed collection. We actually, we did AM counts, I think it was last Wednesday. We have, the PM counts, we're actually going to wait until after Thanksgiving because the data gets skewed pretty much from now until then. So it's, it's something that we're actively assessing. It is something that we hear from the residents also over there. We've, you know, we've installed some speed feedbacks already on Upton, on Plymouth. There's speed feedbacks that are slated for Bryant Off-Ramp and then also for Governor's Road. There's a flashing stop that was just installed earlier this week over at the corner of Bryant and Upton. So it's certainly an area that we are aware of its challenges. And, you know, we've got some solutions in place already. And we're doing counts, collecting data to kind of see, to create a document, short, long, medium-term solutions in the area.
I really do appreciate it. The residents have reached out to me in the last few weeks. I know what, I know what's a cut-through, getting into Milton. I know in the morning if there's, unfortunately, when people get on Google, the Google Maps.
Yeah.
And there's a traffic jam going on, they'll, they'll say, get me to this destination. And they'll go through these little side streets and Governor's Road is one of those ones that pop up. And they, they mitigate through there in the morning.
They do.
Unfortunately. And if you can collect that data and help out some of those residents with the extra stuff going on there. MBTA, we talked a little bit about them changing their bus stops.
Mm-hmm.
I got a little bit, Lincoln Heights, where the apartment buildings are.
Yep.
On Common, is that Common Street? Center Street?
Yep.
Did they move that bus stop? And if they did, can we somehow talk, because now you're pushing the bus stop out for the residents that live up in the Lincoln Heights, as they've been pushed out. And we talked about bus stops in your, MBTA bus stops in your presentation.
Do you mind if we check back on that specific stop?
That would be great.
Get back to you.
That would be great.
I don't want to give you the wrong answer. Yeah.
And then on my list here, the Independence Ave Gate. Now, I know Chris Cassani first came in here, we were in this council, we vetted that thing up in, in Penns Hill. As I've driven by in the last year or two, I've seen not as bad as flow. How, how's everything going on over there?
We are comfortable with how things go on over there. You know, we think that the procedures that we put in place, the intersection improvements that we made, made a difference getting out ahead of that gate opening. We're still ticketing over there. The tickets are more severe in that area than they are anywhere else in the city. So it is something that we, we have done. And it is a strict penalty. So we feel as though it's not something that we get a lot of repeat offenders. There's always going to be people that try their luck with it and go over there. The, the neighbors over there are extremely diligent in what's going on in the street. They're letting us know, saying like, listen, I think there's somebody coming over parking from the T. Sometimes we find out, we go over there and it is a neighbor, it is someone that has a permit and it's a false call, which is fine because we'd rather be safe than let that neighborhood go how they thought that neighborhood was going to go in that.
As long as you keep up with that mitigation of the parking violations.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the residents in that particular area. Because it was about 75% of the people wanted that gate open. I thought it, it did a great job.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great access point.
Your predecessor, Chris Cassani.
Yeah.
He was up here with us and he did a fantastic job, would mitigate it. And we, we jumped the fines up a little bit.
Yep.
And we did the tow after three. Is any towing going on over there?
Uh, that, we don't tow, the, the police tow, but the, usually we don't get to the third.
Sure.
You know, because it, it's pretty hefty fine by the time you get up there.
But thank you. Just keep up with that because it's very important.
Absolutely.
And Counsel Valen's not here, but I did attend your Adams Street Roundabout with Whitwell and, and Adams.
Yep.
Kind of meet.
Yep.
And we had a great discussion, a lot of folks in the, in, in the neighborhood meeting. I know you're going to be having more as we move on.
Yeah.
I think you did a great job with, with handling the whole group.
Thank you.
Good, good hundred people in there that day.
Yeah, it was, it was well-attended, for sure. But, um, yeah, we, we're with that project now. We took, we got a lot of good feedback. We got a lot of good buy-in from the neighbors on, you know, the concept. There were a lot of issues that were brought to our attention that we've circled back with the design team to try and incorporate as many as we can to make that as a complete a solution as possible over there. So we're still like, we're working out the, the design comments. We're excited of the direction that that could be heading. And looking forward to have more to share.
I've, I've fielded a lot of emails and a lot of calls in that particular area over the years. And obviously, we talked offline.
Yep.
About when the development up on Hospital Hill and we've gotten to the point. So we really need to help out those residents because they've been really waiting patiently.
Yeah, totally agree.
As the conversation moved on, a lot of people saying, you know, I think this is the best solution. This, in, in the Roundabout, you know, it's, you've said you've put studies that has been done in other areas of the state.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been very successful. It's a, a solution that a lot of cities, towns, DOTs are moving towards to sort of cut out the new like standard like traffic signal with like three mast arms and like big ugly equipment and lights and electricity and maintenance. And there's a lot of benefits to the Roundabout from a traffic calming standpoint, from a pedestrian access standpoint, just from an aesthetic standpoint that we're really hoping to move forward.
Some of the biggest issues is coming down Whitwell. You're, you're, you're increasing in speed.
Yep.
And then as you take that right-hand turn, you're going down Adams and you're extending in speed.
Right.
So you're, you're picking up some speed. And that, that was the major, you know, complaints that I was getting from those residents in that particular area.
Yeah, we've heard that. And the, the Roundabout concept would slow that approach speed, which is great. You know, something that we heard a lot about was the, the crossing of, across Adams Street. The speeds on Adams Street being a deterrent for being able to cross. And, you know, the design speed of the Roundabout is right around 25 miles per hour. We'll add some visibility improvements to that, the RFB, RFB flashing beacons, should we move forward with it to increase that pedestrian, you know, access as much as possible. And we think it's a wonderful solution to be moving towards.
And the last thing was lighting. And people talked about, you know, obviously getting the proper lighting in that particular area as well. You're, you're part of that division, too.
Absolutely. Yep.
But we, we've come a long way since this, this established some six, seven years ago. We really have in the city. We, we established it. The mayor's administration came in and brought it in front of the City Council. I was on the council with some of my colleagues. And we, we had to do something about what was going on out there in the city. Traffic was the number one thing. It was traffic, roads, taxes, public safety, which includes the trees, police fire and, and staffing. Roads, Commissioner Graciaso's done an unbelievable job with the $100 million, you know, $100 million package that we've had and doing the, doing it throughout the city and being aggressive with the sidewalks. The trees and natural resources, we've done a, we've come a long way in, in traffic, you know. My last question, blinking crosswalks.
Yep.
How many do we have in the city? And did you get a grant for that? And do we foresee to get more of them?
The RFB crossings, those, the yellow flashing lights?
Yes, yes. Those are beautiful.
We have. I can tell you how many we have. Because I wrote it down somewhere. We've installed 27 systems. Many of those have been grant-funded. We just received a grant from the DOT for another $50,000 worth of them, which will fund five. Just the equipment will have to cover equip, installation costs. And then, you know, this is a solution that, this is one of those things that when we are working with developers that are coming in and how do we mitigate some of these issues, these are one of the items that, that we're pushing for is, you know, increased visibility treatments for pedestrians. And RFB is a wonderful, especially the solar ones, just a wonderful solution. So there will certainly be more coming. We have more planned. We have more coming in. This is one of those items that we're just kind of churning away as we get grants, as even like departmental operations funds. It's a worthy investment to, to do them. So...
When it first came over here from the school committee, that was my biggest item I'd talk about. We got to get it in front of the schools, the crosswalks and the lighting and, and, you know, more and more of the crosswalks, you know. And then the other biggest issue was around the senior housings.
Yep.
And I think you guys have done a great job. I'm looking forward to the more. So we're 27, we got five more coming?
We have, yeah, we have 27 that are installed, 27 systems.
Systems.
We have five more that we just got the NTP for the grant to order. And then there are seven more that are either coming as part of a planned mitigation package for developments or that we have already in stock in our yard, ready to go up.
It's great. I see it over at Veterans Stadium, Veterans Memorial Stadium as well, as well as Adams, Adams Field right there. So those are high-impact areas that pick up speed. So I, I want to thank you for coming in here. Allison, Ally, thank you so much for coming in and giving a presentation to the council. I'm sure maybe next year we have you back again, seeing what the progress has done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I really do appreciate you. When we had this, I had this as a resolution back in May. And then Counsel Mahoney also wanted it. So we're glad to have you in here. And with that, Counselors, we are going to allow them to come in and back again. And with that, thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much, President and Counselors.
Thank you, Director. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2022-135, in order of land waiver of the rights for the Real Estate Wentworth Road.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy to put this into ordinance. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's going to go into ordinance. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2022-136, in order of adoption of an election calendar for Award Four special election.
Motion made by Counsel Kane to approve, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Point of privilege, I'd like to just talk a little bit about this political calendar. As Counsel Palmucci has vacated the seat and, and become a judge, congratulations to Counsel Palmucci, Judge Palmucci. Some three weeks ago, I've taken over the role as Counselor, Ward Four Counselor at the time. Unfortunately, when Counsel Palmucci left office, it was, it was in the first year of his term of two years. So in that, with the legislation that we have up here, it does not get appointed by us. So we had to keep it vacant. And now there's a special election. Now, if Counsel Palmucci had left on January 1st, it would have been appointed by us because he would have left halfway point or sooner. So with that, the political calendar that I have in front of us, we're going to vote on with a motion to approve, is approving tonight with all the Counselors' approval, is the nominations papers will be released tomorrow, Tuesday, November 15th. The special election, final election, whether it be preliminary or not, is going to be February 7th. So that is a Tuesday. If there's a preliminary, which means it'll have to be two or more, which has to be three or more, is Tuesday, January 17th. So with that, it looks like it's, there will not be anybody in the seat until at least mid-February. So February 7th is the election with the possibility of a candidate, candidates obviously to file, you know, a recount or anything. It looks like you won't see a, a Ward Four Counselor in there till the mid-February, regardless of what happens with preliminary elections. Is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Okay. Just wanted to let everyone know out there, because a lot of people were asking a lot of questions about Ward Four, obviously. And that is what is in the legislation right now here at the City Council. So with that, we have a motion to approve. And a second, oh, Counsel, Counsel Liang, go right ahead.
I just want to really quickly shout out and acknowledge, Madam Clerk, you, Amanda, everybody in the Elections Office, and even Jen, I know, has been working non-stop this past week. You all are essentially rolling from a general election right into a special election and then right into an election year here that's happening in the city. You all are non-stop. And, and I just want to recognize and call out that this is a continued busy season for you all. And just want to thank you for everything you guys do. So that's it.
Funny, when Counsel Liang, I asked Madam Clerk, she says, you want to talk? No, you do it. You do it. You do it, Mr. President. So anyway, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel, President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Any more items on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
That concludes the agenda for this evening.
That concludes the agenda items. Communication and reports from Mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk, do you have any utilities or anything?
I do. I have some communications to refer to Public Works Committee for Scheduling and Advertising, 2022 Utility Grant of Location, Mass Electric Verizon for Bellevue Road, and 2022-138 Utility Grant of Location, National Grid Watson Road.
That's in the Public Works with Chairperson Harris. So we'll put those on utilities. Do they need to be advertised? Is that...
Yes.
Scheduling and advertising. Thank, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Any other communication reports from Mayor, other city officers, city boards? Counselors, anyone? Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Reports of committees. Counsel Harris, you have the floor. Public Works Committee Chair.
Okay. During, public hearings were held this evening for the following orders, 2022-130 Utility Grant Locations, Mass National Grid, 44 Prospect Hill, positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Harris. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Very good. 2022-133 Utility Grant Location, Mass Electric 33 Newport Ave, positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee, motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative. Motion carries.
2022-134 Utility Grant Location, Mass Electric 33 Newport Ave, positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee, motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane. Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That's it.
That's it. Just a little point of privilege, I really miss Counsel Palmucci. Used to, couple no's in there. So just, just say anything in his ward. Miss him. Kind of laughing over there right now. Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Anyone? Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance? You missed him, Mr. Walker. Motions, orders and resolutions. Before we get into scheduling committee meetings and public hearings, I just, I know that Counsel Palmucci has, has left, obviously. We didn't have really a, a going away up here at the City Council. So at this time, I kind of, you know, I, the, the whole time I've been up here, it was before all of us had been on the City Council, I'd looked over at Counsel Palmucci throughout our time. And it's almost like a soap opera up here. It's almost like high school all over again. And Counsel Palmucci and I, we'd go through a little period of time, and I know other councils have gone through this, that every once in a while, you're getting a little riff with each other. You're not talking to each other for like two months. And then you're best friends for like another three months. And then there's a vote up here, you kind of, eh, I don't like that vote, you know. So I know it goes on here still today, but I've been on the council almost eight years now. And I've served the whole time with Counsel Palmucci. And boy, he was entertaining, I can tell you that much. But I wish him well. And I know he's doing well at being a judge. So that's a little point of privilege. Scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Do we have anybody? Real quick, a little book, a little beautiful book that Rhodey was looking for. Anyways, before we, Counsel Chair of the Finance Committee, Counsel Valen is not here tonight. But we will be having a Monday, November 21st, at 6:30, we'll have the Finance Committee meeting. It's the Public Safety Headquarters will be on the agenda. And then we will go with our City Council meeting at 7:30. We also have two more meetings in December. We have Monday, December 5th. It looks like I have on here the public hearing for the tax rate, 6:30, and the City Council meeting at 6:50. And then our last meeting of the year will be Monday, December 19th, which is 6:30. So three more meetings to go until the new year. Time flies. It's getting cold out there, by the way, too. And with that, motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Harris, we adjourn now at 9:51 PM.